All right, so. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. And I'd like to call the May 21st, 2019 meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Silva.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Fitzgerald.
Here.
Councilmember Florrie. Councilmember Whitaker.
Here.
Councilmember Zara.
Here.
Great. And at this time, I'd like to invite Sheikh Mustafa Umar from the Islamic Institute of Orange County to please come up and give us our invocation.
Thank you for having me. This is truly an honor to be the first Muslim to do the invocation here at Fullerton City Council. And it's also special because it's our holy month of Ramadan, where we've been fasting, and we fast the entire month. So if you'd like, please join me as I pray. In the name of God, the compassionate, the merciful, our Lord, we thank you for allowing us to be here today, for giving us health and ability, for allowing us to live in a land of abundance. Our Lord, show us the truth as truth and help us to follow it. Show us the false as false and prevent us from being deceived by it. Shower us with your mercy. Put in our hearts the generosity to want for others what we want for ourselves. Purify our hearts from greed, from arrogance, from hatred, and from selfishness. Open our hearts so that we work with all those who promote the truth. Grant us strong and unified leadership. Give us the humility to realize our mistakes and to be regretful for them. Remove the bigotry and racism from the hearts of our fellow Americans and the rest of the people in the world. Our Lord, let us not put us, let us put aside our own agendas to do that which pleases you. Our Lord, do not take us to account if we forget or make a mistake. Our Lord, don't test us with more than we can bear. Pardon us, forgive us, and have mercy on us. Amin.
Thank you. And, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Fitzgerald, will you please lead us in the pledge?
Certainly. If you'd stand with me as we pledge allegiance to the flag, remembering all of those men and women who have died in service to our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And Mr. City Attorney, is there a report from closed session?
No report this evening.
Thank you. And is there any councilmembers wishing to report ex parte communications? All right. Seeing none, we'll move to our presentations. And first, we have the act of courage. So I would. Good evening there. Is Officer Tavalodhi here? Oh, come on up, please. And Supervisor Doug Chaffee's office. Is someone here from, come on up? And is someone here from the office of Assemblymember Corks Silva? And also, is there anyone here from the Senator Ling Ling Chang's office? All right. So Officer, I started off. And I'd like to present the certificate for your, I think just doing your duty but going above it. So thank you very much. So Megan Tavalodhi, is that how you say it? Tavalodhi, okay. We present this certificate in recognition for your act of heroism in saving a life from a vicious attack dog. The Fullerton City Council and all the citizens of Fullerton commend Megan Tavalodhi on this deserved honor and extend to her our sincerest appreciation for her ability to act quickly in a moment of danger to protect our citizens. So congratulations. Thank you so much. All right, thank you. But don't go. We have a few more. Supervisor Chaffee's office?
Hello, my name is Janelle Walker, and I'm here as a representative from County Supervisor Doug Chaffee's office. This is really a special privilege and honor to be able to recognize Officer Tavalodhi because she is a county employee. And on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, it is my privilege to honor you for your act of heroism and your ability to act quickly and urgently in the face of danger, which demonstrates your courageous character and deep commitment to protecting and serving the residents of Orange County. So thank you.
So Officer Tavalodhi, on behalf of State Senator Ling Ling Chang, we want to thank you for your hard work that you put into all that you do and also commend you on this act of bravery. You truly saved a life, and we really thank you for everything that you give to our community. So congratulations and thank you.
Right, last one, I promise. Hi, everyone. My name is Katerina Ayenides, and I'm here on behalf of Assemblywoman Sharon Corks Silva, who represents Fullerton in the California State Assembly. So on behalf of the Assemblywoman and the entire California State Assembly, thank you so much for all the work you do in your service and saving someone's life. Your act of courage was so commendable. And thank you so much for serving Orange County.
We'll put you in Saturday. You can haul all the, can you haul all of them?
Yeah. Come, come on. All right.
There we go. All right, looking over here. One, two, and three. More. One, two, and three.
Okay, hold on a second. Let me step in.
Paparazzi. Ready, guys?
Paparazzi, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to everyone on behalf of myself and everyone at Orange County Animal Care. This is a very meaningful and special award. This really means a lot. But as we said, I was just doing my job, and I know that my fellow officers, anyone else, I just happened to be in the right place at the right time. But any of us would have done the same thing. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you again. And at this time, Mr. Ed Paul, would you care to come up and give your presentation, please?
Don't have as much to go there. But Mayor Silva, thank you.
Keep talking.
Thank you very much, councilmembers. Ed Paul, I'm the coordinator for the American Veterans Memorial Association, where the lead group that works together with the city of Fullerton and Loma Vista Memorial Park to put on the ceremony at Loma Vista on next Monday, May 27th, Memorial Day. This will be the 81st ceremony. It's the oldest continuous ceremony at a civilian cemetery in the state of California. We had somebody check that out, and we're very proud of that. It was started by C. Stanley Chapman back in 1939, decorating about 45 to 50 graves with his family. We're now up to 4,300 graves that have to be decorated. So we're very proud of that accomplishment. We've had some great speakers over the years. General Joe Dunford, who is now the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, was our speaker in 2010. General David Berger was our speaker in 2015. He's now up to be the Commandant of the Marine Corps. So we've had some very talented people speak at our ceremonies. This year, we're going to be celebrating the 100th anniversary of the end of World War I and the role of the Army Reserve that started then and is continuous today. Our 100-year-old active vet from the Fullerton American Legion, Charles Pecoraro, will be there. And he's a full 100 years old. He turned 100 in November. Obviously, didn't serve in World War I, but served very honorably in World War II. And we're also going to show the reflections of the Army Reserve since World War I and what their role has been. Our speaker will be Major General Eugene LeBeuf. He's the commanding general of the 79th Infantry Support Command out of Los Alamitos. So fortunately, we've got somebody relatively local. And he's got an incredible background. I encourage you to see. Man has five degrees. He's got degrees from Northwestern, University of Michigan, Stanford, among others. So he's had an incredible background. And this unit was formed during World War I, fought valiantly then, and continued on through World War II. All Army veterans, this year, we're honoring the Army. We invite you to come early, starting at 9:00. We'll be taking photos of you receiving a pin, a thank you for your service with a card. And you'll get the photographs later. And this is through a generous donation we get every year from Fullerton Rotary that we're able to do that. The city is very involved. The Police Department and Fire Department are there. Lieutenant Tony Bogart leads the color guard and the gun salute teams. Engineer Brendan Bento, firefighter of the year, will lead the pledge of allegiance. We have the Fullerton Army JROTC and Troy Navy JROTC cadets, Fullerton American Legion Post 142. We're fortunate to continue to have Dave Dino and Kristen Romero as our vocalists. They're both terrific. Mayor Silva, you will be there to present the POW MIA rose. My main purpose tonight is to get volunteers. This is a big effort. It's not just that one hour on Monday. We have a lot of work on Friday, a lot of work on Saturday, and a lot of work on Tuesday. Friday is when we have to preposition these 4,300 crosses throughout the cemetery. So when the volunteers come on Saturday, they're out there already. So if you have a pickup truck, we'd love to have you help on that. We don't have the ROTC cadets anymore on Friday and Tuesday because of the school change. They no longer allow to come help us in the morning. So anyone who can come and volunteer on Friday morning or Tuesday morning, we definitely will welcome you. And iconic fasting systems will be there on Saturday morning when we decorate the graves. They'll provide refreshments. And Craig Brown, the president, will be out there as he has been the last couple of years. He not only leads the team serving the refreshments, he goes out and decorates graves also. So it's real indication of community involvement. 8:00. Thank you. 8:00 on Saturday is when coming. You'll be done by 10:00. And you can come as a single, a group. HR Director Beatty, she comes every year and hooks up with two or three people that she's never met before. They go out and do it and come back and make new friends. So bring your children for that if they'd like to. And we give community service recognition if you need the form to meet that need. We've got that taken care of. On Tuesday, after we pick up all the flags and crosses, hopefully with the volunteers coming on Tuesday morning, the flags are taken over to the community center where Ginger Ivy has been recruiting volunteers for us there so that we can get those 4,300 flags ironed, put back into 500 per container, and back in the storage for the following year so that they're there. And guys, don't think because it's ironing, you don't show up. First of all, as Mayor Silva can tell you, he'd be there, the training curve is about nine seconds because it's a 12-by-18 piece of cloth, and you go like this, and you're done. But there's also a lot of lifting of those 500 per container. So that's where definitely we need some guys to do that. And then if you have any other calls or information you need, our phone number is 714-871-2412. It's up on the slide there. You also can look at our website, www.AVMAFullerton.org. You can see all the information for this ceremony, videos and photos of prior ceremonies, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Tuesday morning, 7:00. 7:00 at the cemetery, 8:00 at the community center. If you're going to the community center directly, it'd be at 8:00. But 7:00 at the cemetery because we get flags picked up so we can get them over to the community center so the volunteers can start there at 8:00.
And having participated in the ironing part, it is, they do a great job. And thank you for doing this and allowing us to keep remembering those who sacrificed for us. So, Mr. Paul, it's great that you're taking this on again.
Well, I'm happy to do it. I've learned under the best, Buck Catlin. I've worked for him for 25 years on this. So he taught me a lot.
All right. There's no other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and we'll see you on Sunday.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right. So this brings us to our public comments. And this is also the time that during this time here is if anyone wishes to come up and pull a consent item, you may do so now. Request to pull it, and we'll pull it for you. But if you wish to speak on a consent item, a quick comment on it if you want, you can do it during the public comment session. So during the public comment session, you have three minutes to speak on non-agenda items within the jurisdiction of city council and on consent items not pulled from the consent calendar. So if somebody pulls one item, then we'll take that item at the end of the regular items to discuss and debate upon. But if you want to just make a comment, you have that opportunity. And each speaker will, each speaker will be, will have three minutes in total to address the city council on all topics and may only speak one time during the public comments. State regulations prohibit the city council from acting on non-agenda items. So at this time, if you, making public comments again, just so we don't get confused, you can make comments on any items under the agenda and on consent items. And if you wish to pull a consent items, consent item, please let us know now before the public comments begin, and we can pull that for the end of the regular items. So is anyone? Give me one second. Is anyone here looking to pull a consent item? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Zara?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull.
Okay.
Item number three, please.
Okay. Very good. All right. Public comment?
My name is Todd Harrison, and I am one of the endangered residents of Rancho La Paz Mobile Home Park. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council, for listening to me again. Tonight, I did check the response requested box on the speaker form, and I will end with a question for you all to consider. The first time this whole issue came to a council vote, on April 2nd, emergency action was deferred as the new owner of Rancho La Paz, Mr. Saunders, had announced a postponement of the rent increase and a willingness to negotiate with the residents. Mr. Saunders has since met with a committee representing us. That committee was formed by the newly elected chapter heads we chose as the Rancho La Paz chapter of the Gizmo. The negotiating committee well represents the varied circumstances of we residents, and a number of them are experienced at negotiations of this import and scale. The meeting did not go well. I have confirmed the following with Lupe Ramirez, RLP Chapter President and one of the negotiators. She and the other 14 members of the committee can attest to the two lines I share tonight. Lupe asked, are you negotiating with anyone else? Mr. Saunders replied, I'm not negotiating with anyone. We are just talking. One member of the team said his new payment would be so prohibitive, he would not be able to buy his grandchildren a Christmas present or take a vacation to see them. Mr. Saunders replied, you must decide if you want to buy clothes or go out to eat or pay your space rent. In the talking with, since this is apparently not a negotiation, Mr. Saunders suggested that Rancho La Paz rent comparables should be places such as the MHP he owns across from the beach at Huntington Beach and had no reply to the comment that we are railroad track adjacent, not beach adjacent. I ask you tonight to direct city staff to prepare you a report from easily accessible public information on Mr. Saunders' track record. His reputation and the trail of misery he has left are blatantly obvious. Waiting until the second council meeting in July is likely to be too late to prevent the human toll he's taken on the residents at his complete lack of mercy. On May 7th, you heard the unplanned offer topic warning from Kitty Giammarillo about her interactions with Mr. Saunders in Santa Ana. The time limit prevents me from loading you with examples of just how bad things already are for us. But if any of you care to ask, there's lots of evidence to support our need for some anti-gouging ordinance before September. This includes the fact that some residents are already starving themselves in anticipation of having to pay the 50% plus rent increase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Jose Trinidad Casaneda. And I just want to start by saying, as a resident of Fullerton, it's really exciting and inspiring to see that we're hiring more police officers. So I wanted to welcome the new officer, Officer Garibay. Just as a resident, it's refreshing. And I also want to bring up a point that I always bring up because I'm that crazy environmental person. It is, there's a winter storm right now. And we're all feeling it. You can't walk outside without feeling the fresh air or the rains that are coming. And that is because the Pacific Ocean in the equator is heating up due to increasing carbon emissions. And now that we're at a point where we need to take action on state mandates as a municipality, we need to start thinking very seriously about pathways that'll get us there. And I've mentioned it before, but I think I want to mention it again. Community Choice Energy, it's a model that some of you are familiar with, and it's a model that'll bring clean air as well as lower electricity bills for everyone here, including residents and business owners. It's a way to jumpstart any, any programs you might want to consider that will help clean up their air, like free trees or even tax credits for our electric vehicles that are being sold in the city. And we had to also look at what it'll be like five years from now when we do have this Community Choice Energy program, like in Sonoma County. Sonoma Clean Power was just awarded the top credit rating. And they're already far ahead of giving their residents and ratepayers electric cars for much cheaper than it already is in the market. And I think the possibilities are endless with this. So please, please, please consider commissioning a study, taking some form of action that'll lead us down the path of clean energy here in Fullerton. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and city council. This is Chris Garter, your Planning Commission Chairman for this year, as long as I'm on the commission, I hope, this year. Let's hope I'm not evicted or anything, but we'll see. I appreciate the chance to serve the city, and I know my commissioner, fellow commissioners do as well. And I came here, I think, a couple months ago asking for some action items for us so that we have a productive year. And as far as I'm aware, we haven't had that yet. So I came up with 10 ideas that... yet, so I came up with ten ideas that, just to put on the table for us to consider, issues that we can work on over the coming six months and hopefully beyond, so that we can try to get ahead of the housing issue, which as you've seen just during this council term so far, is gripping so many people in Fullerton. So here are ten ideas that I came up with relatively quickly. Um, looking at a small lot ordinance, which would help with entry-level homeownership opportunities, and could actually help with the mobile home, uh, owner situation that we're facing, uh, allowing for tiny homes in Fullerton, uh, considering opportunities for students at Fullerton College and Cal State Fullerton to live closer to campus, which would help a lot with our parking needs, uh, signal some sort of consideration for, uh, something other than warehouses at the Kimberly-Clark site. Uh, I think housing could be a part of the mix of what comes out of that, doesn't have to be, but consider it. Um, a senior housing overlay zone, particularly near medical centers and parks, so that we're allowing the construction of housing that is, um, accessible to seniors. Most of our homes in Fullerton were made pre-ADA, it's not just fifty-one percent, we're talking like ninety percent of our homes in Fullerton are pre-ADA, so getting around is very difficult, and I see that in my own family. Um, a housing overlay zone in commercial areas where the commercial isn't working, and we see it, and the property owners are stuck with the current land use regulations that they have, so they're not producing the income for the city or for themselves to be viable. Um, we could look at parking in the downtown, I know we've done a lot on that, but particularly with regard to how that affects residential development, uh, it's, it's very difficult to make that work. Um, consider looking at our density bonus again, to allow for, uh, affordable projects to pencil out easier. Some sort of a tax abatement for the mobile home parks, it's not really a planning thing, but the city's growth, net growth in sale, in property taxes, you could look at some sort of a contract with the owners to abate that growth, if they agree to certain city stipulations, ideally with regard to affordability, um, so that there is, uh, a managed transition there. Uh, and also, uh, look at ADUs. Um, I think there's so much we could do with that, it's a naturally affordable housing opportunity, and it's cheap, and, uh, it fits in with neighborhoods, so those are ten ideas, and I hope you can give us and staff clear directions so we know what you want us to produce. Thank you.
Chris, could you email that list to our council secretary so that she can disseminate that?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I wrote some of it down, but I didn't know it was one, two, three.
Sure. Sure, it's a lot, I know, I, sorry.
Gotta go by numbers.
I can formalize that for you, certainly.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Silva and council members, uh, I wish this...
Can you pull the bike down a little bit just a wee?
I'm sorry, thank you.
No, that's okay. Thank you.
I wish this were not necessary, that I see you all every two weeks, but we're at that position. Uh, my name is Jean Perez, and I'm a member of the negotiating committee at Rancho La Paz with John Saunders, our new owner. I am sad to say that Rancho La Paz homeowner association negotiation with John Saunders have not produced an offer that could be agreed upon. There have been long-term goals presented by Mr. Saunders that would not allow many living in the park to remain in our homes. I've seen some statistics, uh, that he's offered, that I'm not free to present to you tonight, but my personal, um, rent on a piece of land that I own a two-hundred-thousand-dollar mobile home on would be in excess of thirteen-hundred dollars a month, and I know that doesn't seem like a large amount to some, but that's right at doubling our rent right now. And we are not, we're not wanting John Saunders to go broke, but we just would like to have a little bit of consideration in doing this over a much longer period of time. He's saying he wants his money back in two and a half, um, not money back, but making a, a profit in two and a half years. And he's talking about long-range contracts, leases, uh, four to five years at these higher amounts. And so, um, you, you've already heard from other people about the, uh, situation with low-income, uh, folks at Rancho La Paz, they're there. I've, Saturday I was out helping with the distribution of some food to the people in the park. It is happening there, and they are low-income. I wouldn't want to see Fullerton and, uh, Anaheim put more people out on the street because they can't, they have no means to pay thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars, that's not out of the question. When they're making social security of maybe anywhere from seven to, to twelve, thirteen-hundred dollars, I don't know what each of them get, but it's a limited amount. And we, we're just hoping, and we're asking that, that you would help us somehow find a way to be able to afford our homes and stay there to live, to have the peace that we intended to have.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silva.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm Jamie Newton, your deputy chief of operations for your fire department. I'm here tonight with Dan Lancaster, he's a captain with us, he's a member, the president of the Fullerton Firefighters Association, and also our lead instructor for our recruit firefighter academy. Today, we started day one of a four-week, very rigorous fire academy. Uh, basically, we teach, uh, these academy kids that come out of the, uh, local academies how to do it the Fullerton's way. I'll pass this next section over to Dan.
Yeah, we, we talked at the stop, excuse me, the stop meeting, uh, this morning about, uh, invitation for our city leaders to take part in kind of a, a show-and-tell of what it takes to, to bring a new hire in, train them for four weeks, and then the, the year after. Until you really see us work firsthand, uh, you, you won't really grasp the, the reality that, um, our retention issues have. So, uh, we'd like to invite you down Monday, June tenth, uh, nine AM to one PM, see what we're all about, see what your firefighters are, are doing, and that's to city leaders. Gretchen, police chief, you wanna come down and see, see the other boys in blue go to work? Um, whoever wants to be involved that, that is a decision-maker for our city, when you come down and you see the reality of, of what we're doing and why we're doing it, and I, we feel, well, um, with our staff as well, that when you're making decisions based on public safety and you see what it takes to get our recruits to the level of expectation that the, the Fullerton Fire Department, the standards that we have, um, it'll really put some, some, some grip behind the meeting, so that's our invitation to you, let us know. Chief Lozier will be, will be following up with an email with all the details, meet your firefighters, have lunch with us, ask questions, kinda see what we're all about, so.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name's Patty Tudor, I'm a Fullerton resident, I'll be short, since I wasn't expecting to speak today, but I wanted to reiterate what Jose Trinidad Castaneda said earlier, uh, hoping that Fullerton gets on board with the community choice energy that's happening now. I'm not sure you're aware, but Irvine right now is in the midst of doing a study, uh, they should have a final study by, uh, next month, and shortly after, they'll be looking for other cities to, uh, assuming that they go ahead, they will be looking for other cities that do not have to be adjacent to go along with them. So, there will be a window where some other cities will be, will join in with Irvine, and I'm hoping that Fullerton considers being one of those cities. And there'll be, there'll be a meeting, I, I wish I could give you a date, but I don't know that it's been set yet, it's gonna be in June or July, for, uh, city leaders to come and hear about that study, so I'm hoping that, uh, somebody from the leadership here can attend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes a todos, mi nombre es Marta Gutierrez, y forma parte de una comunidad del área de Fullerton.
De cual área?
Um, Valencia y Lemon.
Okay. Um, good evening, my name is Marta, uh, I am here on behalf of a community, uh, group of residents near Lemon and Valencia.
Estamos aquí para solicitar, por favor, su ayuda sobre la luz que está precisamente sobre Lemon y Valencia. Yo soy madre de tres hijos, hoy en día ellos estuvieron en la escuela de Fullerton.
Um, we're here to ask you tonight for help regarding our, uh, our turn signal and crossing, um, just, crossing the street on Valencia and Lemon, I'm the mother of three children.
La razón es porque durante todos los años que estuvieron en la escuela de Maple nunca hubo este cambio, y se siguen dando desafortunadamente muchísimos incidentes. Cada día que mis hijos tienen que ir a la escuela, uno se queda con la preocupación de que les va a pasar algo.
Okay, I don't know much, sorry. I'm not a...
So, so she just said that, uh, when her kids were going, since her kids have been going to Maple, she has a high school student out there, that, uh, the situation has remained, and they've seen a lot of incidents at that intersection, uh, uh, and so they're here to lobby or request a turn signal, or some modifications to that signal at Valencia and Lemon.
Yes.
Perfect. Y pues yo como una persona que tiene que trabajar todos los días, prefiero esperar y llegar un poco más tarde a mi trabajo y rodear al cruzar el puente, porque ya en dos ocasiones han estado a punto de atropellar.
So, uh, just as a working person, working every day, um, she would like for there to be a crossing guard that is there, uh, yeah, and then, uh...
Well, she, she avoids, she avoids that crossing 'cause, uh, uh, of the danger she sees, and she has to go walk down to the bridge and cross Lemon using the, the bridge by the, by Maple Elementary, and so she's concerned about the, the, the length of time and the lack of, uh, uh, I guess, an adequate signal there.
Así es, y todos los días, desafortunadamente, se miran muchos incidentes, no hace mucho, uh, unos días atrás, hubo un incidente donde estuvieron involucrados tres carros.
So, daily she sees incidents, and just the other day, there was an accident, an incident where, that involved three cars, and there's been a lot of close calls.
Así es que ojalá que, por favor, puedan ayudarnos y se pueda proveer una flecha o algo donde los, uh, con, los conductores puedan tomarse el tiempo para que el peatón pueda pasar con mucha seguridad.
So, she's just hoping that we can, A, do a turn signal there, or increase the time that takes to cross so that the, the patrons who are walking there would have more time to cross safely.
Thank you.
Gracias, thank you.
Soy María Sandoval, y soy líder de la comunidad de Richmond, pero pertenezco a Lemon y Valencia, y también vengo por la misma circunstancia. Estoy agradecida por haber puesto la línea de, de no dar vuelta en U.
Got this one?
Um, I was just telling him to come closer, so that way, she's speaking for all the residents.
Oh, okay. So, uh, it's, uh, me das un número otra vez, por favor?
María Sandoval.
So, she's María Sandoval, and she's from the Richmond Community Center, and she's also here advocating for, for a signal, uh, sign there, and, uh, donde pusieron, donde pusimos ese?
En la Lemon y la Valencia.
Uh, so there, uh, so, ahí pusimos también el no U-turn?
Ahí fue donde pusieron la U-turn, pero lo que, lo que ocupamos es la flecha de dar vuelta, porque...
Um, so what she's more concerned about is the turn signal, to make a turn?
Tenemos un, un señor que cruza a los niños, pero los carros no respetan al pobre señor y tampoco a nosotros, y el otro día estuvo a punto de atropellar una señora con mi niña, y venía yo del programa después de escuela.
Uh, so she, there is a gentleman who helps, uh, helps people cross the streets, but the cars, the drivers, don't respect the crossing guard, and so they race past him, and while she was walking her daughter after, um, after an after-school program...
Estuvo a punto de atropellar un carro con la niña, era una señora. Okay, estoy agradecida...
A ver, permita lejos, coge.
Uh, there was a, a female driver who, um, almost ran into them.
Estoy agradecida porque mandaron a la policía, pero la necesitamos de lunes a jueves.
Um, the city sent a police officer, but they're really looking for someone from Monday through Thursday.
Porque esos días son los días más ocupados cuando los estudiantes van al colegio, cuando van a la universidad, y pasan a cuarenta millas y no se fijan.
Uh, those are the times, those are the days and times when Fullerton College students, uh, drive through the streets very quickly, and they don't look both ways.
Y pues estoy...
They don't look both ways.
Estoy insistiendo de vuelta en la flecha, okay? Espero que ahora que vinimos el grupo nos ayude un poquito más. Gracias.
Now, there is a signal at that intersection.
No.
I mean, I go through...
No.
There's no signal at all of that intersection?
It's a turn signal with a green arrow.
There's a signal, but they want a, a turn, a turning, uh, an arrow.
Oh.
A protected turn signal, like a green arrow, and so...
I, I wanna know about the crossing guard. You said that when there's a crossing guard there, that the cars go through it, but the crossing guard only goes, walks across on a green light, so cross traffic would be blowing a red light.
They do.
Uh, it's a stand-up, okay.
Hi, my name is Karina Tovar, and I am a thirty-year resident here in Fullerton. I also work for the Fullerton School District, and I work at Maple Elementary. Um, I've been, you know, um, I just got in an accident after driving for twenty years, my car was totaled there at that intersection, um, last June, and this was a resident from La Mach that came to Fullerton College, um, she ran the red light and totaled my car. Now I have an eighteen-year-old and a nineteen-year-old driving, which I'm so freaked out about because of that intersection. Um, I walk to work, 'cause I live two blocks away from Maple, and it's constantly, it's true what this parent is saying, uh, cars are not respecting the signal, they wanna run over the, uh, the cross guard or us, and so I'd just rather drive to work, which I'm two blocks, because I'm afraid of that signal. Those parents are, I mean, people that are driving through there are just going through the light, because the, the gap between Orange Thorpe and Valencia, it's a big gap, so they take velocity really fast, and they just run through Lemon. Or if they're coming from, um, Commonwealth going to Orange Thorpe, they're going down the bridge, and once they come up, they see yellow, they just go straight through it, right, and even if it's red. So it's very dangerous there. Um, we have our Kinder Playground right on the corner, there's some metal post that, you know, will block a car from, you know, getting into the school, but there's accidents weekly, where we have kids, Kinder Area, crying, just this Thursday, there was a hit-and-run right by the, uh, the baseball field, and we have upper graders crying because there was an accident, and one of the cars took off and the other one was chasing. And I know, for you guys to do a study, uh, there has to be, uh, you know, a whole research on what's happening, if it's, they're running the light because they're distracted or conditioned, but we have three-hundred-and-sixty students crossing, walking to Maple, and we have all these thousands of students going to Fullerton College and, and Cal State Fullerton that are not paying attention. And this is a small community on Lemon and Valencia that, this is the only way out, and then we also have the mobile home community also come out that way. So it's a lot of traffic going by there. When the officers do go in and help us out, everything runs smooth, but when there's no officers, everybody's flying through everywhere. So we really, really are here to advocate for that signal, either to get change, or get another signal a, a little bit more behind between Orange Thorpe and Lemon, but something please needs to be get done before, and really, a big accident happens at the school, a car gets into the playground or something.
Yeah.
Okay? Thank you.
Buenas tardes, uh, yo también vengo por la misma situación, yo tengo niños en Maple, son mis niños? Y, y realmente estamos muy preocupados por, por todos los, los accidentes que están pasando.
Good evening, um, I'm a mother at the Valencia and Lemon, uh, neighborhood, and I've brought my children with me, here they are, and, uh, really and truly, uh, we are very concerned about the number of accidents at that intersection.
Agradecemos mucho lo que están haciendo por, por poner las, la, las líneas rojas y, y, este, y poner la, la flecha para que, perdón, la línea para que no den vuelta en U, pero no hay suficiente. En realidad nosotros cruzamos todos los días, y es muy peligroso para nuestros hijos. Muchas veces nos han pasado los carros casi para atropellarlos.
Uh, we're thankful for everything the city has done, including the, including the red light, uh, but it's not enough, and it's still very dangerous for us to cross there.
Uh, de verdad, uh, en realidad como madre, uh, que quiero pedirles, por favor, que les suplicamos que nos ayuden, no queremos que nuestros niños sean atropellados, ellos cruzan, vienen de la high school, vienen de, de Maple, entonces tenemos mucha preocupación por ellos. Muchas gracias.
And so, as a mother, we're asking, as, I'm asking for your help, um, there's a lot of students from Fullerton College, and from the university, and from Maple, and we just want to avoid any accidents.
Yeah, thank you.
A todos, or...
No, sorry.
Okay. Last one.
Uh, so, hi, uh, hello, uh, Mr. Silva and everyone else here, uh, I would like to thank you, first of all, especially here are police officers that I've seen them out there, uh, early mornings or even afternoons, like, trying to give tickets to those who cross the line, as, I'm a Fullerton, uh, high school sophomore, and since I have zero period, I've had to leave at six-thirty in the morning to get to my class on time, and come, depending home on, uh, late, like, maybe two, uh, when school ends, or even... or even 4:00 when I have after-school for my APR honors classes. And so I've been hit multiple times, twice in the backpack walking home and also near misses as eight times I've counted with either my family or just by myself going or coming from school. As like, I really like to thank the officers here because just in the last time I've I've come home walking, I've seen them give at least two, three tickets to people who have crossed the light injustously. So as a part of this community and as a student, I know the difficulties as traffic starts building up and especially since it's a big part and there's an elementary right there. I've seen people, just the other day at an event for our elementary on, I think, May the 3rd, we had a Cinco de Mayo event for the people. And right as I was coming out, three cars ended up crashing in between them and there was little kids from, little kids and families crossing and it was really dangerous as both cars turned without really looking the other way and then another car running into them. So I can testify that there has been a lot of accidents that have occurred this and from ranging from like six that I've been out there. I've seen the cross guard helping us go halfway and then allowing us to cross just to be safe. But the times he isn't there, the times the officers haven't been there, there have been multiple accidents that have occurred. Thank you very much for hearing me out.
Thank you.
What's your name?
It's Alexis Cabrera.
Thank you, Alexis.
Good evening, friends. My name's Wayne Taylor. I'm a citizen of Fullerton, just south of Cal State Fullerton. And I'm really proud that Fullerton is now known as a city that's welcoming. But what I really came to talk about is the transition to solar energy. So I'll be brief. I'm on the church council at First Lutheran Church, just, you know, a couple of blocks from here. And just last week, our church adopted solar energy panels on the roof. And this is going to save us $7,000 per year. Okay, that'll be paid off with three and a half years of savings because it only costs $21,000 to do the solar energy we need for that church. That's not, you know, so this is really huge. I mean, it means that we are past the tipping point for solar energy being really economically viable here in Southern California. And so, you know, we're at that economic tipping point and I, I know that you've been working on this already, you have solar cells on the roofs of some parking lots. But I really advocate, go ahead and put solar cells on everything. All the roofs of the buildings that you have, you know, in the city that you control. And then to help us citizens to adopt solar energy more easily, there's the Community Choice Energy, CCE it's called. This is a program which I believe they're adopting in Irvine and they've already adopted in Whittier. And what they do is they aggregate energy and then have a plan whereby citizens can buy into it. And so it's optional, but it's going to be very cost-effective. So I really advocate that, in fact, I'm asking that the city of Fullerton have our city engineer do a study of that, you know, economic viability for opting into the CCE Energy Choice Plan. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Hildy Reese and this is my second time coming to the council meeting. And I want to applaud you, all of you, for your time that you spend on listening and hopefully researching and all that sort of thing. I appreciate the fact that Wilshire Avenue has put in roundabouts and fixed the gutters. And I live in the middle of, well, not quite the middle, but anyway, very close to downtown. And I don't know, it's been an ongoing problem. I've lived there for 21 years now. And out of those 21 years, maybe I've had three or four months where there was no water standing in front of my house. So I'm appealing, I noticed on your agenda that you've got gutters and street repairs on there and I applaud you for that. And I hope that somebody that's got some real smarts can figure out why my house does stand in water all the time. And I just want to comment on the, on the community that's come up here to ask for help at the crossing guards over there in Lemon and Orange Thorpe or whatever it is. But anyway, I feel for those citizens. I just heard a program on the fact that our country doesn't have, is not raising children to respect authority. And I don't know what the solution is on that. But I would hope that our country would get back into the Word of God and just start having spiritual families that have spiritual leaders in them and mothers that train their children at home instead of being out in the workforce. And I don't know how that's ever going to happen. But anyway, we can start by being good examples ourselves and I applaud all of you for being good examples and trying your best.
Thank you.
We have any other people who want to speak during public comments, please line up on the wall behind me.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am a, well, my name is Mavis, as you say. I live in the city of Fullerton and I've been here for the last 10 years. The reason why I'm here is I want to propose, I mean, I always feel like with healthy cities, people move here. And of course, I do feel for the families that were talking about the, the crosswalk. But what I want to propose right now is for who would I need to talk to about opening up the parks to have free yoga for the city? So that's what I want to do. And since I work in healthcare and everything moves slow, I kind of figured I needed to come to the city council meeting to get this answered, so I'm here.
Thank you, we'll give you that answer in a minute, yes.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to push you live on the Facebook network of 2.8 billion. Is that what it is now? I think it's 2.8 billion. Mr. Zuckerberg is doing pretty good. My name is Ryan, Razzle Farce, I'm one of the owners and owners of the Arco A and P and 519 South Harbor Boulevard. Thank you for letting me speak, all of the mayor, all of the council members.
Six inches away from the mic, it won't be so muffled.
Is that better?
A little further away.
Right there?
That's good.
Okay. I was just wanting to bring to your attention, I know you guys are discussing the water rate increase. So I'm here to talk about it. I've learned a lot about water in the last 24 months since I bought a farm up in Oregon. And I learned about water rights and King's Law properties and the rights to secure the water and who has the rights to do that and who has the rights to sell that. Fortunately, somehow I'm in the position to sell my water now up in 1330 West Main Street in Oregon, Sheridan, Oregon. The water permit is under Wallace B. Hyder. Permit number is 49597, priority date is 12/31/1907. And the South Yonhill County River is first mouth.
Ryan, could you stick to items that are under our jurisdiction, please?
This is under our jurisdiction. I'm going to relate to you why the water rates are going up, sir. The reason the water rates are going up.
You're still way too close.
It's because.
We can't hear you.
There you go.
It's because what? Because there's three people that are in charge of water in California. They're the ones that were making the money when all those fires were happening. The city's buying the water from different people. They're the ones that control the properties, that control the water. How's that work? That's the Federal Reserve. And when the British government went off the gold standard, they went on another gold standard, ladies and gentlemen. It's called liquid gold. Liquid gold is more valuable than gold because it's always flowing. It's always going to make you money. This is the great thing about King's Law. So the reason I'm here is because I'm in the opportunity zone and the opportunity zones are programs established by Congress to aid and about, aid the private low-income urban areas and rural communities nationwide. So what am I? I'm one of the greatest free agent LeBron Jameses in the property business. So I'm in the opportunity zone. I'm seeking a partner, probably a national corporation, to come and take that water and bring it to the people. Why is that? Because we're not very healthy, ladies and gentlemen. We don't drink enough water. This is the problem with society today. We don't drink enough water. We drink Coke, soda, I sell this stuff at my gas station. Thank you for your business and your patronage. We need to drink more water, ladies and gentlemen. And I'm here to bring you that water from Oregon, hopefully, with my partners in the future. And God bless America, where I'm in the opportunity zone. Thank you Governor Brown, Governor Newsom, and Governor Brown of Oregon and President Trump. Thank you and happy new year, everyone. God bless all those veterans, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other speakers wishing to come up for public comments? All right, if not, then we'll, we'll bring it back to Mr. City Manager. Would you like to address any of the items?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, on a couple of the items. One, I do want to state, and I think I'll talk with my Public Works Director and our Police Chief about a community meeting over at the Maple Center about this intersection. Because after the comments of the last meeting, there was actually an item in January before the Transportation and Circulation Commission on this item, on this intersection. And so we do have some report outs on that. There's been about 10 different actions being looked at. I can report that, it's a couple of work orders, so they're, they're not there yet, but they're en route. Some new signage about no U-turns at that intersection. One of the things that has been changed is actually the signal timing at that intersection where an extra second of red was added for each way. So basically, if you're there, a lot of times what happens is it goes yellow, red, automatically the other side goes green. At this time, there's an extra second of red all around, so it's a, it's a complete stop everywhere. So that helps. There was a discussion about somebody flooring it for a yellow to try to get through. This would help on that issue. We have relocated the radar speed sign. And let's see, no U-turn signs. There's a work order for more red curb in that area. I don't know exactly what side of the streets, but to increase the visibility, that's been one of the concerns there. And then a couple of other items. But I will talk with our Public Works Director and Chief of Police, schedule a meeting out at the Maple Center so that we can work with the community, inform them, hear some more of their concerns and questions and really talk to them about when we go out there and look at an intersection, what are we looking for, what can we do? And I do also know that our police officers have communicated with the crossing guard company to try to help them be better at the crossing during those morning hours. And I do drive that intersection every morning during the school time and I do see some of the concern out there. So that's the update on that, but we will report back to City Council on that.
Mr. Manager, did you say the extra time on the red was implemented already?
Yes, yes, so. For, is it free yoga and the park? Alice, Alice, will you talk with this young lady about free yoga and the park? So we will take care of that. I will work with a fire chief about the invitation to watch the, the new fire folks going through the training on June 10th. We'll make sure that we can set that up. Can't have all five of you there at one time, but we'll most certainly work on that. And I do know that on some of the solar stuff, we do have a consultant working with Public Works right now looking at some solar energy things, energy efficiency, I should say, which includes solar. And so they're looking at that. We actually do have, we have battery backup on our STEM project. So I believe that is buying or storing power overnight, which is cheaper power than utilizing it during the day. So we are employing some of those more energy-efficient issues and we're always looking to do that because, yes, it does help us operate a little bit more leaner and efficiently on that. So those are the comments I have on what was discussed there. I do want to, the last time, I did not welcome some of our new hirees coming into the city. So I want to do that. Keith Lee Hale, who's a adult services librarian. Nicole Lau, who is a police records clerk. Luis Castillo, Robert Little, and Mark Flores, who are all new police officer trainee. Lauren D'Angelo, who is with our Parks and Recreation, she's a coordinator. And then again, some other good news on police officer and firefighters. The most recent list I have is Nathaniel Real, who's a police officer trainee. And then Juan Garabé, who was mentioned earlier, is a new police officer. And then firefighter trainees, and hopefully the council will be able to see them in action, is Ryan Huckabee, Edward O., Austin Grant, and Joseph King. And so I welcome all those folks to the city of Fullerton.
Thank you. All right, now it's time for a staff communication and this, Lori?
You know, I think there's ghosts up here. To have a piece of paper in your hand and a minute later it is gone forever. How does that happen? Yeah, you took it away from me, so I'd stop talking. Anyway, you know, I'm very concerned about the Lemon Valencia intersection and I probably go through that either two or four times every single day of my life. That Maple School is slam up against Lemon, which is a very busy intersection. And I'm generally not there during school times. But the community has made this an issue sufficient a number of times that I think it needs to be looked at. If for no other reason than this city is on notice that the neighborhood, the surrounding community thinks it's dangerous. In effect, this city is on notice that the residents think it's dangerous and I think that's going to require full examination. Second, I would like to see our Public Works Department or the city manager give us a little rundown on this community choice. I have not heard of it before, but I would like to see how it works in other communities, maybe Irvine. I think we're getting to that point where we're going to need to become very self-protective and self-reliant in the arena of energy. And I for one am interested in it and would like to see some information. We've had three speakers talk about that today. Another thing, Ms. Hildy Reese got up and said she wished that children growing up today were more respectful. And I will have to tell you that last week, Mayor Silva and I had the honor of presenting awards to elementary, junior high, and high school kids. It was a Parks and Recreation Department recognition of students in the third and sixth grade at the elementary level. And these kids weren't just academically good, they were also very involved in their community. And just the sheer amount of energy that comes from young people is wonderful. And I felt much respect and much encouraged by taking a look at those kids. Lastly, Fullerton Heights opened up a new affordable housing project at the intersection close to Raymond and Orange Thorpe. Thirty-six affordable units, two-thirds of those units for people who had previously been homeless with mental health issues to boot. And if I could cram every single resident in Fullerton who is opposed to affordable housing into that building to take a look, I would do it because I think it would do much to assuage people's concerns about these kinds of facilities in our neighborhoods. I had the chance to talk with some of the residents who were absolutely thrilled to have a bed at night, a home to go, to go to, to be able to lock their front door. And lastly, you know, I'm probably talking so much today because I usually don't do public comments. But I am very concerned about Rancho La Paz. And I would like to see our staff or maybe our city attorney take a look. And I would like to see our staff or maybe our city attorney take a look at local ordinances that have dealt with this situation before. I'm not all gone on rent control, because that brings a whole array of regulations and things that the city has to get involved in. But I do believe that when a landowner comes in and raises rents to the extent that it forces residents out of the community, that there ought to be some mechanism for making those people whole. Mobile home parks are a cat of a very different color. If I'm a tenant, that's one thing. If I'm a tenant and I get a 30-day notice to leave, I'm not leaving something behind. These residents oftentimes will have to. And as Ms. Perez has spoken to us twice, Mrs. Perez, excuse me, five years ago, she and her husband spent $200,000 to buy their mobile home. And then, they had a very reasonable rent, which justified doing that. Now, if the rent is raised to the extent that they can no longer stay there, then you can bet there's going to be a lot of other residents that can't afford their, afford the rents. And all of a sudden, you're going to have 10, 20, 30 mobile homes up for sale, which is going to decrease the value of their homes. That is not right. The Fullerton Observer has done a story about past investments by the, the new owner of Rancho La Paz, and I'd like to see our city attorney take a look at other ordinances in this county that have addressed this, the issue. I understand that San Juan Capistrano has an ordinance to take care of this situation, and I think we should be prepared for an alternative if the residents and if the new owner of Rancho La Paz have not reached some sort of long-term agreement. I can just see the resolution now and the whereas is going something like this. Whereas the mobile home communities afford affordable housing, whereas we're in a homeless crises, we're in a dearth of affordable housing right now. I think our city attorneys are talented enough that we would have a rational, justifiable reason for imposing such an ordinance on mobile homeowners in our city.
Thank you. Mr. Zara?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to address some of the also community, public comments. So, on the La Paz, you know, I really think we, we obviously ought not to let this go, and we maintain at least some level of communication. So, I'm, I've actually been in touch with some of the residents, and I've been paying attention to this. And I did hear about how the, the meetings didn't go so well, and I also heard the same thing from Mr. Saunders' attorney as well, which I had a conversation with him. So, we're paying attention to it. Again, it's, it's still, I think there's another round of conversations that's going to happen, so let's see what happens there. And I know it's on our agenda forecast to come soon, but hopefully, we can figure out some solution. And I'll leave it obviously to our attorneys to see what solutions there may be in, you know, in advance of what may come. On the Lemon-Vallencia, that's also a street I, I free, I take often, that's my go-to neighborhood, and yes, I've, I've seen that, those issues there. So, I appreciate the extra time on the red and also the community meeting. So, I'm looking forward to seeing what we can come up with to find a solution there. On the standing water issue, this is actually a very common problem that a lot of residents have been complaining about, where you see standing water. And it does create health hazards when, you know, it breeding ground for mosquitoes. So, I would love us to see if we could do some sort of survey to see where, where we have the most problems in ours, in the streets. So, maybe we can put them as part of the curb management program and see how we can slowly look, you know, address them one, one after the other, as our funding improves, obviously. And I, I don't know if any of the, the item that today we're approving, hopefully, or we're addressing on the consent calendar for the curb management, I don't know if that will address any of these issues or not. Yeah.
It will address some of them, but obviously, it's, it's, this may be a new request, so I'd have to verify whether or not the address was included.
Okay, thank you. And then, on the community choice energy, I would love to hear what, more on that and what Irvine is doing and what Whittier has done, and see what, if this is something that's feasible for our city and what the future looks like when it comes to that. And also, on solar, I mean, I think it's definitely something that there's a lot of incentives for, from the state and federal for us to invest, not even having to invest in it ourselves. A lot of companies now are coming in with all those rebates, and they set things up for free. And then, we use, we basically just buy back that energy at a lower cost and then, so it'd be at zero cost to the city. So, I think there's something there that we can explore, and I'm glad we're, I think we're, we're doing that, and we're moving forward with that one. I would like to also thank the, I know they left, because it's Ramadan, they had to go eat and break fast, but I want to thank Sheikh Mustafa and the Islamic Institute of Orange County for coming and doing invocation today, and then for hosting an open house where they invited many community members. And I attended that, it was a wonderful event and a very interfaith event, and I hope we can have more of those outreach between our communities. I also attended the State of the Community, and I really want to thank our mayor for, and our city and our staff for putting together a wonderful event. And mostly, I'd like to really thank our employees, firefighters, police, all our departments, public work employees, shout out to them. It is Public Works Week, so, and really, it's without them, we wouldn't, won't even have a city to run. Also, I attended the Pearl Park Community Meeting, there were several meetings that, that happened, and we had some attendance from some community members, but I think we're on the right track as far as getting feedback, and I'm, I'm looking forward to that part getting done. Also, there was the Sunrise Rotary Club fundraiser, which was at the Plaza in the downtown, and that was wonderful. The fundraiser benefited the, all the arts, so it goes all to the, the kids in our schools. And then, I also attended the Third Annual Dinner, Iftar Dinner for Ramadan, hosted by the, here in Fullerton, by the Girl Scouts of Orange County, the Minaret Candidate, Cadet. They are the Senior Troop 3119, I just wanted to get that right there. And it's for the, the National Girl Scouts Iftar Initiative, and the theme was celebrating Muslim women in sports. And it was actually a very inspiring event. On the waterfront, OCWD updates, I actually got a chance to tour our water facilities yesterday, and thank you for Director McQuaid and Kevin and Tiffany, shout out to them. It was a, really, it was an eye-opener to see, you know, the, our aging system and see some of the facility and the need that we need to invest in, in our water infrastructure. I also attended the ACWA, which is an acronym for Association of California Water Agency. It's a conference in Monterey, and the, it was actually very, very well-attended and very informative and productive. Discussions ranged from seawater intrusion issues up in the Delta and, and how it affects us down here, as we import water from the north. Also, water quality and accessibility disadvantaged communities was a very big topic, and, but the topic du jour was obviously the tax on water. So, to tax or not to tax, and it got heated at some points in time as well in those discussions. I did get a chance to speak to our Secretary of Natural Resources, Wade Crowfoot, and I explained to him some of my opinions on the water tax and the concerns. The issue on that is that the, the, there is an exemption for low-income families for that water tax proposed by the governor, but the, the, the problem is that most low-income families live in apartment buildings, and the landlord is still paying that tax, and there's no accountability and no mechanism to monitor the rent pass-through or the, the potential rent increases that could occur. So, that is something that I shared with the secretary, and he took it quite seriously. We followed up through the OCWD with a letter as well explaining that. Now, since then, there's been some developments. The Senate has actually put forward a proposal for a water package that, that does not include a tax, and that was by Senator Tony Atkins. And so, there may be a solution coming up at the horizon without a water, without taxing our water. And so, with that, if you'd like more information, you can definitely email me or go to OCWD.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Whitaker?
Well, first, I'd like to commend the Muckenthaler for carrying out a successful 25th anniversary their Motor Car Festival, that was this past weekend. And even though we're getting, continuing April showers here, even in May, the numbers were down just a little bit as far as attendees, but they carried off a very successful event. One of the great things about going to the car shows, they were open both on Saturday and Sunday for, for this event, is that you can also tour the Muckenthaler Mansion and see the exhibits, which are there currently, which are focused on automobiles, and some very impressive artwork is to be seen there. So, for those in the public who haven't visited, I'd very much recommend getting by the Muckenthaler whenever you have an opportunity. The operational thing that I'd like to bring up, Mr. Mayor, is I've been getting out a lot in West Fullerton, and I want to commend the staff. I'm seeing some progress, I'm seeing some larger asphalt patches in areas of residential streets where they've become really very weather-beaten. And, you know, one of the things that is a problem, I think, in so many areas like this, whether it's cul-de-sacs or regular residential streets, are what I call asphalt road apples, which are these chunks of pavement that come out, and they're on the surface throughout the streets, and they can be thrown by a tire, they're hazard to children, you know, riding bicycles, things of this sort. And they're also handy for some malicious person to pick up and throw at somebody as well. So, unlike in the past, where I've seen mostly city staff moving quickly to deal with potholes, like I said, some of the patches I'm seeing are more comprehensive than that, and I'm very pleased to see that happen. It also causes me to call attention to Agenda Item 11 tonight. I'm very pleased to see that we do have a replacement paver for street repairs that's going to be back and active. So, I, I just think there are fewer areas in city government right now than we can pay as much attention to and scrape together funds as to try to keep our aging streets from becoming even more dilapidated. So, thank you very much on that, Meg. I'm looking forward as well to the Memorial Day event coming up, and it's, one other thing I thought I'd mention, because our next council meeting will be right before that, is June 6th is going to be the 75th anniversary of the D-Day Invasion. And so, 75th is a pretty big time to have an observance, at least for, for those veterans, for the, the Greatest Generation that participated and helped to liberate Europe. Seventy-five years ago now, very surprising. That's all I have this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. Mayor Paul Temfus-Jill?
Yeah, to build on what Councilmember Whitaker said about the pavement, it also reminds me of another item we have on tonight's agenda to, Item 10, to, which is on our consent calendar, to extend the contract for graffiti removal. We, as residents, can download the app called My Fullerton, and you can report both graffiti, potholes, downed trees, a whole litany of problems that you see. Take a picture of that problem, and it pinpoints your location, sends it directly to the appropriate staff. And staff and our contractors are extremely responsive in being able to fix those problems. And Director McQuaid, I wanted to thank you too for the sidewalk repair up at the Nora Cutner Trail. It was a very dangerous condition, and I really appreciated you taking care of it. And the, the maintenance of keeping the graffiti off those trails has been really fantastic. So, for you and your contractors, your staff members, I wanted to thank you for that. I wanted also to congratulate a new business in town that I was pleased to visit earlier, let's see, late last week. It's a new shop that's opened downtown called Lettuce Brie, as in brie cheese, and it's a cheese and meat shop that was opened by two local women, that has a great vibe, that serves excellent food, and it's a great place, you know, even for families to go. They serve a great peanut butter and jelly sandwich as well. So, I encourage you to take the kids down there and visit. And then, this morning, I was pleased to be able to go to the Fire Department Headquarters for the commissioning of the new Battalion Chief Command Vehicle. It's a new tradition that our Fire Department has started, commissioning new vehicles. And it was a great education for me to see all of the resources that are packed into this truck that really serves as the command station in, in emergencies, from wildfires to structure fires. And the capabilities, the technological capabilities of this truck are amazing, and I really applaud our command staff in its thoughtfulness in building this truck. So, we have a great public safety force, as you all know, here in town, and, and I got to see it firsthand today. So, that was, I was pleased to be a part of that. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And on my part, I do want to thank Parks and Rec and all the, the staff that put on the State of the City, so thank you for a great show, and also to the Fullerton Collaborative, they partner with us and turned out to be a great event, so, and for those of you that were there, thank you for coming. I also want to congratulate Unity Salon, 25 years here in Fullerton, right there at the corner of Zewilshire and Harbor. And again, it was also started by two women, two very committed women, and, oh, and yes, on the, I want to also thank Parks and Rec for putting that ceremony to, for the elementary students and high school students. So, thank you for taking that on, and it was great to partner with our districts and, and recognize some of these students who are going above and beyond. So, thank you for that. And with that, we'll close public comments, and we will pull item, Mr. Whitaker?
That's what I was going to mention, go ahead.
Yeah, I would say we'll pull Item 3 from the consent calendar, and do I have a motion to?
And also 7.
Oh, and 3 and 7.
And 5, for me, only to lodge a no vote, so we don't really need to discuss that one.
All right, so 3, 5, and 7, we'll pull those, any other?
And 13.
And 13.
Just for information.
All right, 3, 5.
I'll move the remainder before anything else gets called.
All right. Second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll start out with Item 3, Mr. Zara? Oh, no, I'm sorry, we take those at the end, you're right. My apologies. All right. We will then move on to our regular business.
Good evening, Mayor Silva, members of the council. For the record, I'm Michael O'Kelly, I'm the Director of Administrative Services with the city of Fullerton. I'm pleased to present this evening the Budget Study Session for Fiscal Year 2019, 2020. That's the fiscal year that will start July 1st, so about five or six weeks from now. Budgets- Budget Strategy Action, just as a reminder, we're currently in Fiscal Year 2018. During this fiscal year, the budget that was adopted by the council last year was, was a balanced general fund budget. One of the items that was used to balance the budget was to include $1.7 million in general fund salary savings. So what that meant was there needed to be at least 17 positions in the general fund to remain vacant during the fiscal year. And as, as you've heard during the strategic planning session and previous quarterly updates, we far exceeded that, that number. Also, part of strategy was just regular monitoring of actual revenues, expenditures, so there's no shortfalls and overages. And you've been hearing about some of those things as we've gone on quarterly. We've been monitoring activity related to PERS, sales tax, legislative issues, SB1 funding. These are all things that, that we were watching during 1819. Also, during the year, we worked towards cost reductions through contract services. Again, things that you're, you're well aware of. For Fiscal Year 2019, 20, using those same directives plus additional policies that the council has approved or brought forth during the fiscal year and through the strategic planning session, we've brought, we are, we were committed to providing a structurally balanced general fund budget. And I'll just comment on what does that exactly mean, because that term can be used a little bit broadly. That means that your ongoing revenues equal your ongoing expenditures. It doesn't necessarily address what are your service levels, are your service levels where you want them to be or not where you want them to be. But where your ongoing revenues will pay for the ongoing expenditures at current service levels, and that's, that's the direction, and that's what you'll see that's been proposed. This year, as part of balancing, we've talked a lot about vacancy rate and we budgeted $2.8 million in salary savings this year, which is equal to a 4% of general fund salaries and benefits. And a full disclosure, that number is probably closer to about 13% currently. So that is what would, I think, is going to be an easily attainable goal there. Also, as part of this process, a detailed review of revenues and expenditures have gone on with the city manager and department heads to ensure everything's budgeted accurately. So maybe at the last meeting, you heard me talk about staying above the forest as opposed to dropping down into the, to the trees. Happy to do that in their, their attachments, but I can assure you, there, there's been tens of hours that have been spent with the city manager and department heads going down into line, line item detail. Also, going forward, 1920, just continuing to seek organizational efficiencies, economic development activities, fee cost studies, legislative reform, identification of potential revenue sources or expenditure prioritizations to fund streets and infrastructure needs. That's obviously as a result of the things that, the policies that the council has put forth and that were identified through the strategic planning session last month. And just as a reminder with any budget, we're required to have a budget adopted before June 30th. That's obviously a good financial practice. And the, I'd like to describe the budget as a living, breathing document. It's good as of the date that it's adopted and then the world starts to change. Generally, even before July 1st, you may even see some amendments to the budget. But for practice, you, you start with a, this is our starting point. And undoubtedly, the budget will be amended through the fiscal year.
Before you go to the next slide, bullet point number two. So the $2.8 million in salary savings equal to 4% of the general fund is realistically 13%?
I would say, Councilwoman, based on currently, currently, the vacancy rate is, I'm looking at Gretchen to clarify, it's around 13%. And we're budgeting 4%. So what that means is that we plan through the recruitment process, through retaining employees, that instead of having a 13% vacancy rate, we, we are going to try to get down to where we have no more than a 4% vacancy rate. If it turned out through the fiscal year that the average vacancy rate throughout the year was 8%, there would be an additional $2.8 million of appropriations that would otherwise go unspent unless they're backfilled with overtime and, and things of that nature. All city funds, so I'll talk the orange columns here as the blue and white are, are just to give some background on the current budget situation that we're in now. These are all city funds. These numbers always look a little bit different than the general fund because I say this pretty much every quarter, they're highly subject to large projects, capital improvement projects, and how those are funded that can distort the expenditures and revenues by the time a fiscal year's starting to end. And so I'll talk the orange columns here. The revenues are $196.9 million and about 50% of that is general fund and another 25% of that is what I would call utilities, so sewer, water, sanitation, refuse. About 75, 80% of all the revenues are related to about six of your major funds. On the expenditure side, the same holds, same holds true as well. About half of that is general fund expenditures. Also included in the expenditures is $24 million for new CIP projects. And I think it's important just to note, to remind you of capital improvement projects. Once they are approved and adopted by the council, they generally carry forward. And so when we do the fiscal year budget, sorry. No, it's a, making sure I didn't confuse anybody here. So the orange column under expenditures though includes $24 million worth of CIP. Other CIP projects that have already been approved by the council are not included in that, that orange number. Those are, those have been appropriated and those projects will still continue to carry on. The general fund, general fund is obviously of, of some level of importance. It's the operating fund of the city. And what you'll see in the orange columns there are the proposed revenues and the proposed expenditures are balanced. This would meet the definition of a structurally balanced budget. Again, that doesn't talk to, that's with maintaining current service levels. If you just maybe look at the blue columns there, those are the projected revenues and expenditures. Projected that revenues will be about $2.8 million higher than budget. 2.5 million of that is due to underground utilities, the sale of those to another Southern California city, and about $400,000, $500,000 of additional revenues from sales tax. Not that sales tax has increased beyond what was projected, it's just the state had some issues with their collections and some of the sales tax collections were pushed into 2018, 19 that were really probably earned in 17, 18. The big number to pay attention to here, we talked about this at the strategic planning session as part of the third quarter budget versus actual, is that blue column under expenditures that shows the projection is $93 million for this fiscal year. The budget's 96. So what that means is there will be about $3 million in general fund balance. So think of that as your bank account for the general fund, greater than what was originally expected when the fiscal year started. And that is related to this vacancy rate that we've had throughout the fiscal year. On average, it's been about 10%, which equals 7 million. About half of that is spent through backfilling for OT needs, predominantly for fire and police. So what that means is there will be, instead of about 10 to 11 million in the general fund balance, when you start fiscal year 1920, there'll be about 14 million. Just some highlights on tax revenues. Tax revenues are about 75% of the general fund revenue budget. Property taxes are projected to increase total property taxes by about 4%. The assessed values continue to rise. We've got some projections going forward as to how long that, that will continue. Sales tax increase of about 2%, primarily due to inflation, but also some increased economic activity and passage of AB 147. So AB 147, that was the Assembly Bill that I think people would refer to as California's take on the Wayfair decision that would provide additional sales tax by collecting from those sellers that are not currently collecting. Originally, those estimates were, seemed to be in the, maybe as much as half a million range. And then in working with our consultants, HDL, that has significantly shrunk over the last month or so, down to, doesn't usually go the other way, unfortunately. So we included 100,000, that's conservative. Our, our consultants would say it could be as much as 135,000, but not totally confident there. And also 3% increases in other taxes just as the economy continues to move forward.
Mike, sorry?
Yes, Councilmember.
How, how did they come up with these estimates? Do you know what methodology they used for this?
I can, I can tell you the methodology resulted is in throughout California, they see that there's a per capita increase of somewhere about a dollar per capita throughout California. And they've applied that as a rule. The methodology that went into calculating the dollar, I, I can only tell you that would be based on the additional sales tax that would be generated and then how that would flow through the existing calculation mechanisms. And when they run that through, they're coming up with, with statewide numbers and then dividing that out by the, the number of, of residents.
But the formula is based on the county pool formula.
Yes.
And that is really based on retail square footage in your city, in layman's terms. So that's been, you know, my argument for years now is that internet sales tax distribution is inherently unfair to cities like ours because it's based on a brick and mortar formula distribution.
And some more highlights, charges for services. Really, the big, the big one here is the care ambulance contract. So last year, when the council adopted the budget, that, that arrangement wasn't fully solidified. And so what we did as a placeholder was put a net $1 million in revenues. Well, once the contract was put in place, it, it's really, revenues are going to be net about 3.2 million with, 3.4 million with expenditures of about 2.2 million, but that distorts the, the comparatives if you try to look at last year's starting budget versus, versus this year's starting budget. And to just talk about that a little bit, that, there was some concern as we got that program up and running, or as the fire department really got that up and running, as to how that, how that would ultimately look. And this year, it looks like the net million dollars, when you remove certain revenues that aren't going to come to the city anymore, when you add in the new revenues and subtract out the cost of, of the care ambulance contract, looks like we will, should have a pretty good chance at hitting the million this year with some upside for future years as well. So I would say that that's working out as, as planned as of now. There's a lot of chart, a lot of bars here, so I think if we maybe focus on the orange, which is the proposed, this really just graphically describes some of the things that I talked about. So property tax increase of about $1.3 million due to assessed values continuing to rise. We, there's, some of the subsets of property tax are supplemental taxes. We've reduced that budget by about 30% with the assumption that the property values are starting to, not to continue to increase and sales volumes are slowing down. Sales tax at 22.2 million, you know, about 400,000 of that, I'm, I'm saying things I already said here. So I'll talk about a few other taxes. That's primarily your transient occupancy tax, that's your hotel tax, it's 10% of the cost of the room, that's about $3 million. Business registration's about 750,000 in there. Charges for services, the large one is the ambulance contract, that's about $4 million. That also includes plan check fees, Parks and Rec fees, which are about 2.8 million, library fees, which are about 400,000. Franchise fees, those are fees that are paid generally by utilities, so cable companies, gas company, Edison, for the use of the city's ride of way. And those are based on gross fees and, and based on negotiated agreements. Other revenues is, is a catch-all. That includes things such as parking citations, interest income, and I've got a biggie I'm missing here, so I'm going to refer to my notes if you will indulge me for a moment here. And we're budgeting this relatively, relatively flat as compared to the, the previous year. Jumping ahead there. The big one that I'd just like to mention, this is something that occurred about five years ago, that if you don't go and look at agendas, I think people can start to forget the sewer, water, fund, pay the city for use of city assets. So this was done in about 2013, 2014. It's about 1.2, 1.3 million dollars. And it was all done through, through contracts and council resolutions. So this is where the city owns property, yet it's utilized by the, by the water utility and sewer utility. And there's a market rate that, that's charged that was based on appraisals at the time with some escalators there. General fund expenditure highlights, salaries and benefits, they're about 71% of the general fund, so about $70 million. I talked about it, the assumption of a 4% employee vacancy factor this year, which would save, which reduces the appropriations by 2.8 million dollars. Again, that, that's conservative based on our current vacancy rates, 10%. So, so this is an attainable, attainable expenditure savings there. Calpers, we don't, haven't talked a lot about calpers lately because it's doing exactly what has been talked about for a number of years, which is growing exponentially and not, not really seeing leveling off for another four to five years. But those costs have grown by another $2 million this year.
Grew by 4 million last year, correct?
Yes. So now it's about, calpers cost of the general fund is about 20% of the general fund, 19.5%. Maintenance operations cost, this again, I, I mentioned is care ambulance. We're showing the full revenues on the revenue side and the full cost on the expenditure side as opposed to just netting them out. And so that, that causes a little bit of a, a distortion. There's, there was discussion of a more comprehensive citizen priority survey. There's 50,000 additional in the city manager's budget for those efforts. And just for tracking purposes, going forward as the contract is, is coming up, I think in the next couple of months, the Fullerton Brea Fire Command Costs and Reimbursements, the fire department has consolidated them into, into one program so they can track and analyze much easier than in the past. And that took some significant effort on there apart from their administrative side of the house. Also, non-CIP capital outlay, so any capital outlay item that's over $5,000 that's purchased, that's increased from 50,000 to 100,000. That's for fire equipment replacement costs. So it's $30,000 for some of the hoses and another 60,000 for thermal imaging cameras for the fire apparatus. This is just a graphical depiction of, of what I just spoke about. So salaries and benefits, $69 million, which is about 70% of the general fund budget. Maintenance and operations, $28 million. About half of that is police and fire. About 15%, 10 to 15% alone is the care ambulance contract. What's included in maintenance operations as an example would be the contributions that the, let's say, the police department with general funds makes for vehicle replacement program. That alone's about 650, 700,000 dollars. What that does is go to the internal service fund for vehicle replacement based on age of vehicles. And I mentioned the capital outlay amounts of 100,000. If you notice in the blue under capital outlay, just as a reminder, the council approved the fire department to buy new defibrillator equipment about two to three months ago. And that's why the number was in the 4 to 400,000 dollars last year and it's lower going forward this year. General fund five-year forecast, as this pops up on the screen, it looks like a blast, shotgun blast of numbers. So if I can just say on the proposed budget column, which is on the far left, proposed budget 1920, we believe the general fund will start with about 14.1 million dollars. The revenues and the expenditures will equal each other. You'll see there's a transfer in, that's from the traffic safety fund, and a transfer out of 100,000 dollars, that's for a library CIP project. When the year, fiscal year 1920 ends, we project the ending fund balance will be 14.3 million. To compare that to the 10% reserve requirement that's been established by the council and also compare it to the striving for 17%, which would be the, the best practice, you can see 14.3 millions, a little higher than the middle of those two numbers, it's about 14.5%. And so, you know, in talking with the city manager about this and also as the, the council's been made aware of, of this additional fund balance, there will most likely be an item that's brought forth to the council to discuss options from a policy perspective on what you, you may decide to do with that additional 3 million that was unexpected. Obviously, things would be leave it in fund balance, apply it for streets and roads, any number of options. As we run this projection out, this is a five-year projection, and I just want to talk about the, the assumptions that are briefly shown at the top. This is status quo, so it's whatever labor negotiations are already agreed to as of now, nothing beyond that. PERS increases, estimate increases for property tax, sales tax, increases, assumed increases in utility rates and things of that nature for the general fund for electricity. No additional money for street, road infrastructure. And based on the, some of the discussion at the la, at the strategic planning session, previously, we didn't include anything for recessionary effects. And so every six years now, what we've built in for recession is a negative 2%, a decrease of 2% on sales tax. Generally grows at 2% roughly on a normal basis, so that would be a 4% decline from what you'd normally expect, and a flattening of property tax. So not extreme on the surface. If you take that every six years and run that out... If you take that every six years and run that out, it has a material impact. But what we believe to be a reasonable assumption for recessions, this also includes a 4% vacancy rate going out forward. So that's that $2.8 million. Naturally, most government agencies, just the way the hiring process and the resignation process works, even in the best of times, you're normally at around a 2% vacancy rate. So you'll see if you really just follow, I think the ending fund balance at the bottom is really the gist of this. It becomes difficult to maintain that structurally balanced budget. We started that recession in 2021. So all we did was do a no more increase in property tax and a negative 2% in sales tax. And you'll see that that has a pretty flat line on revenues, yet our expenditures continue to grow because of calpers costs and other things. So as you run that out, you see that after about 21, 22, you start to dip below the 10% reserve requirement. And so that's, I think, some numbers to keep. You know, if you watch CNBC and you read financial news, you know, you continuously hear talk about an impending recession, yet it seems like it's, feels like it's been 12 months away for 36 months now, which I think is good. You know, and it's helped the city tread water with property taxes and sales taxes continuing to increase, just covering the PERS costs really. And so obviously, that would be subject to change. If there was no recession or if it occurred later on, it would change these assumptions here.
Mike, just to clarify, so that recessionary projection is 2021, but in 21, 22, it goes back to the normal?
Yes, normal increases. So after that, we assume sales tax and property tax will increase by about 2%. So what happens is it ends up creating, this is a graphical representation of what I just described. The 17%, this is looking at what's the fund balance. So the revenues and the expenditures, when you see that fund balance decreasing, that means the expenditures are projected to be higher than the revenues. So you see that recessionary effect in what's shown as 21, the second bar there. And you'll see a decline. And then on the back end, when it becomes about 2030, the PERS rates start to come back down. And with increases in sales tax and property tax, even with those recessionary factors, you see things turn around in about 10 or 11 years. I would say on any of these projections, a 12 to 36-month projection, I think there's a reasonable 80, 85%. Making that number up, but level of certainty, once you start running to four or five years, probably becomes muddy. I don't think if you looked at five-year projections in 2005, I doubt they showed what happened in 2009 and 2010. In fact, I'm sure they didn't. So, but this gives you an idea. And as you're moving this train forward, that is the city of Fullerton. This is, you know, things that you'd want to watch out for as the road signs, you know, you start to see they become less blurry and you see where things are going.
And Mike, again, going back to that slide, that's the same assumption, which is status quo, 1% kind of here and there, but nothing really else, correct?
Yes, PERS cost, really the big driver there is PERS cost increase and then some reduction in revenue. And then, yeah, so status quo, exactly. The next version's a, got some extra things in there. So this version assumes that there would be a 1% unknown additional personnel cost increase beyond what's already been negotiated. So that's factored in every year going forward. What would that be for? That would be for any council adopted personnel cost increases, whether that be medical increases, salaries, compensation study and bringing salaries in line or anything of that nature. It also includes $6 million for additional street road infrastructure as well. Just to see what would that look like if the general fund needed to provide that amount of funding. Same recessionary standards and same employee vacancy rate through. And you see that the $6 million and that 1% obviously, if you look at that ending fund balance, kind of bold line, you'll see that there's a precipitous decline. If there were a recession in 2021 and you spent, and you transferred $6 million to streets and roads and you spend an extra 1%, you know, things would look bad in about 24, 24 to 36 months. Not where you would want to be. And just graphically.
But that's presuming that you would pell-mill, go ahead and spend $6 million every year, even though you couldn't afford it or were in recessionary times.
Yes, council member.
Which is unlikely to happen.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, and then it looks like, and it looks like this. So this is really graphical representation that that would be unrealistic based on the current revenue that the city receives. The next 12 slides.
Before you go on there, can I just make a comment? I mean, my assumption with you showing us that alternative, this alternative five-year forecast with salary increases, with road funding in it, I think that that is because you've heard from many of us and many in the community that status quo isn't acceptable. So is this your exploration into, if it's not acceptable, what would it look like?
The answer is yes, yes, council member. And also in some slides coming forward, we'll talk about road condition and CIP and that $6 million will factor back in as well.
All right, thanks.
Short answer is yes. I'm happy to skip through these next slides unless a member of the council would like to stop. What it really is, is a department-by-department look at general fund increases and decreases. There's a couple I maybe I'll for sure stop on. Ken is spending a lot of money on this citizen survey. I don't know if anybody wants to talk to him about that. I'm kidding.
He's got a lot of money on that.
One fell swoop. This is an interesting one that I think bears some discussion. This is general government. So this is being used as a somewhat catchall for this vacancy rate that is included in the budget. And so if you think about all the departments, we run all of the salaries and benefits costs for the department for their fully funded positions. And we come up with that dollar amount and we input it in the system and it shows by department. Yet we believe there will be a 4% vacancy rate at least. We can't say exactly where would those vacancies be. And so what we've done is put them in general fund. We did this last year and I'll explain this a little bit because you'll see, these are negative expenditures. So we're showing expenditures, we add them up and it's $97 million. If we didn't have that $2.8 million in there, the budget would be right at about $100 million. So what this is, is the general government department has always been used primarily to pay out leave and termination cash outs. Because that can blow a departmental budget if there's a high-level employee or a few high-level employees and they have a large holiday or vacation cash out. All of a sudden, the departmental budget would be, you know, could be off by 60, 70,000. And so historically, the city's budgeted about 400,000 for those costs. Those costs anywhere range from 300,000 to 600,000 depending on the fiscal year. What we did in 1819 is said, we're still going to budget for those costs, but we're also going to take out $1.7 million worth of salaries and benefits that we've budgeted other places. It ends up with a net negative. And so what that really does is that's a net takeaway of the appropriations that you've provided to the city manager and the rest of the city on the general fund. And so what you see is proposed, it's the exact same thing as previous years. That negative $2.8 million, that's a 4% vacancy. Reason you see 2.4 is we still expect to have $400,000 worth of leave cash out expenditures. So those expenses will hit a line item that's currently budgeted at about 400,000. And then the savings of 2.8 million will sit there. And if we hired every position that we could hire based on the department's budget on July 1 and everybody stayed there the whole year, we would blow our budget by 2.8 million dollars. But the city manager wouldn't allow that to happen even in the normal course. And on top of it, our actual vacancy rate significantly higher than that. But as positions are filled, that's something that would be monitored and reported back to you quarterly. There's one more interesting line here, this 520,000. 500,000 of that is budgeted for a general fund water bill. That's a cost that will need to be allocated to all the departments based on square footage and use. We just haven't allocated it at this point and we wanted to make sure that was included in the budget. So it's there, I think by probably when the quarterly report comes to you in August or September for the fourth quarter of this fiscal year, there would be a request to reallocate that appropriation to all of the departments and then it'll be charged accordingly. Fire is significantly impacted in looks because of this care ambulance contract. There are a couple other little interesting items here I'll just point out. Contract agencies increase, so the Metro City's dispatch contract is $105,000. Increase in maintenance operations. And I also mentioned the capital improvement project includes $60,000 for these thermal imaging cameras and $30,000 for new, I'm going to say hoses. And I'll look to Chief Newton if somebody wants to ask why a hose costs 30,000. Hearing no questions, I'll move through. It may bear just some discussion maybe on library and parks and rec. We talk about library and parks and rec as, you know, there's a cost to the general fund. We don't fully recover those costs through fees, not unlike, you know, most of the services that the city provides. But just looking at the library budget, there's a $30,000 increase for collection development, that's for books. And then some increase for some necessary maintenance and repairs for servers and other equipments, otherwise stagnant. Parks and rec, there are some building maintenance liability increases that are based on claims, exposure and experience. So Gretchen and her risk management team go through and calculate the liability contributions that are to be made to cover liability costs going forward. And those are based on experience, exposure, number of FTE, and those are periodically adjusted. And so that has been included in parks and rec's budget this year. Proposed fee revisions, there are some fee revisions included in this year's budget. So typically, when the budget comes before you, the whole fee schedule is re-adopted and there are some fee adjustments included. So I'll go through them from a broad perspective and then we can delve into some detail as necessary. The parks and rec fee adjustments, so every year, the parks and rec department goes through and looks at utilization, market rates. They've, I think Hugo's spoken about this a few times over the last few months. They take this to the parks and rec commission and bring those forward. There's an attachment that shows there's a significant amount of changes to those fees. Airport hangar fees, so when the economy was depressed, there were hangars that were not necessary to be used by people that wanted to use them for airplanes. So I think they use them for classic cars and whatever other storage purposes because that's not the best use of those hangars. And the FAA would prefer those to be used for aeronautical purposes. The airport staff is recommending that non-aeronautical hangar fees, which were more expensive, that those hangars be used for aeronautical use, step one. And then step two, because they're less expensive, requesting a 6% increase in those hangar fees to cover the loss of that greater revenue. Animal care licensing fees, so this was an item that was brought before the council about 17 months ago, where animal care licensing fees, the cost for services for the city is about $2 million. There's about $600,000, $700,000 worth of fees that are recovered. And the other 1.3-ish million is paid by the city for animal care. At that time, what the recommendation was, was to move closer to a full cost recovery from about a 50% level to something closer to 75%. And that's been incorporated into these fees. Accessory dwelling unit fees, this was an item that was brought before the council about three to four months ago, where those fees were eliminated for the remainder of fiscal year 2018, 19. And the recommendation would be to continue those fees to be eliminated through 1920. And then the council would decide again at the end of fiscal year 1920 whether to increase those fees or not.
What is cost recovery with respect to animal care? How do you recover costs that way, licensing the pets?
Licensing, primarily licensing fees.
Okay, so the recommendation is to increase those fees?
Yes, council member. And I think, I don't know, the accessory dwelling unit fee, since that was a newer item that came through. Ted, I don't know if you, I think maybe you had some information as far as how many people take advantage? Okay, so there's been five to seven ADUs based on this fee amount being reduced or eliminated. Capital improvement projects, so this is a big chunk of the annual budget. It's $24 million, that's new capital improvement projects. So these are not the, this is not a refresh of projects that have been approved in the past. It's not, does not include the five and a half million that the council has already approved to be used for streets that was a result of one-time revenue. So these are new projects. It includes $6.7 million of street improvements. And I'll talk a little as we go forward, but just as a reminder, that starts to get you in the funding level for a pavement condition index of 65, 68, somewhere in that range. $3.2 million for traffic signals, safety lighting, 3 million in sewer projects, storm drains. Parks, $9.2 million, which includes $8.1 million grant funding for the first portion of purchase of land in Coyote Hills. This is starting to get a little long in the tooth as it's about 14 months old. There hasn't been a refresh yet and some of the numbers have changed. But I can talk through a few of these. On the chart on the left, that shows, the orange line shows the pavement condition index that was measured at the time of the last report and it was about 64.7. At that time, the assumption would be that there were $7.7 million worth of expenditures in 1819. Some of those projects are still ongoing. When they're completed, the PCI would get up to 67.7. And at that point, it would decrease because there was a presumption of continued funding of about $5 million, four and a half to 5 million. SB1 did not end up going away. And so when you look at the chart on the right, it shows you what it would look like if you were spending about $6 million, a little more than $6 million, which is what is, which actually looks like what the ongoing funding sources are currently, that you would be able to maintain the PCI at about 66, 67 at that point. And so that shortfall that was in green on the chart on the right, it's been now filled in with SB1 money. So you'll see that the PCI would get to about 67 and looks like dip a little bit and then be in that 66, 67.
Actually, Mike, if I could, Meg, is that shortfall is still a shortfall? The SB1 and the M2 gas tax going forward, is that approximately 5 million per year? Okay, so yeah, to clarify, it's about approximately 5 million per year is our normal allocation, which would be gas tax and measure M2 funds. So, and that includes the SB1 funds going forward. So that was why when SB1 was going before the voters is very important because it would have reduced our annual amount to about two and a half million, maybe 3 million a year of funds towards our roads. So to get that funding to just maintain the PCI.
At a D grade.
At a D grade, yes, we were still short. So now what we're recommending because of the council previous action with the 5.4, you know, we are looking at about in 1920, 10 million or so to include that 5.4 million of funding. So that will kick the PCI up. But again, that was one-time only funds. So it just kind of kicks it up and then continues that downward slide if we're not able to invest more money into our roads. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
So just to be clear, then on the right, we still are short 1.2, then 1.5, then 1.6 on even maintaining a D, a high D grade for our roads.
For fiscal year '21, '22 and beyond, correct? Yeah, because in 1920, and again, this is not updated, but in 1920, we have that 5.4 million extra that's going in, so.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Kim, for the clarification. This breaks it out as far as the new streets and pavement improvement projects that are included here. M2, two and a half, SB1, 2.4, gas tax and some CDBG. Also, the second bullet point, just as a reminder again, that there was $5.4 million that were previously approved, CIP projects for street pavement. Those are not included in the new CIP budget because they've already been approved by the council and appropriated. But those will most likely, those projects will occur at the end of this fiscal year and then moving into fiscal year 1920. Also, uh, council member Whitaker brought up a point that was, uh, echoed back at the time the PCI report was done, that there, uh, there's a potential additional million dollars worth of improvements that are just the result of, of sewer water projects that require street repair. And I suspect the current public works director would maybe argue that up or down a little bit. Do you have any thoughts on that, Meg?
Are you talking in terms of the additional work that's done as part of the pavement repairs?
That would actually work towards improving PCI.
There's a portion of it that would, because the projects are joined together with any additional funding.
Okay. So that was not to leave that, that off the table, that funding. Additional funding required to improve PCI. These are the same things that, that we continue to look at. So grant funding, additional revenues. Council member Fitzgerald talked about more equitable funding allocation, um, on sales tax, which I think, I make the same argument with SB1 funding and other, other roads monies. Use of future one-time revenues or cost savings, that this may be something you consider as part of that $3 million additional general fund balance. And also, um, to leave nothing off the table, a reprioritization or reduction of other general fund services. This is where, you know, there's these facts and figures you can, you can throw out. And if you wanted to come up with $6 million, uh, that would, that would equal, you know, 39 firefighters or 29 police officers or total elimination of the library and parks and rec to come up with six to 7 million dollars. So those are obviously stark service cuts. But that's what the, the final bullet point is meant to represent.
And Mayor, members of council, just on that, um, the more equitable funding allocation. In pursuing that, I am meeting this Friday with some other city managers and the CEO of the County of Orange to talk about, basically that unequitable funding allocation where the county, where they have just a slight bit more of road miles than us. They get, um, oh, 12 times as much, uh, SB1 funds. And so we are meeting to look at, uh, if there's a better way of sharing that and getting some, uh, competitive grants that, uh, allow the jurisdictions that are joining each other to compete for those, to do larger stretches of those arterial highways, because those arterial highways are our most, uh, expensive endeavors to pursue. So, so we are working and looking under every stone.
How does it, what, how does it look? Is it looking good or?
Well, I haven't had that meeting yet, but Orange Thorpe is on my mind, so. And many other streets.
While we're talking grants, I had a question here on, uh, page five. On the grants fund, um, we're showing under proposed, uh, none from state, none from federal. And it's making a pretty big difference in, in the total there. Is this a very conservative estimate or what, what might likely happen there?
So this is really kind of an, an accounting function here. So until there are, until grants materialize, even if they're expected, we generally would not, uh, budget, budget the appropriation for them until it's more of a certainty and generally they'll, not generally, they will come back before the council for, for approval.
Yeah, I understand these are unknowns, but we did have projected figures next to them, which give an idea of how understated this may be at this stage, but.
The, the grants fund is one of these funds that's, uh, a little bit anomalous compared to the other funds. It's, uh, doesn't move in the same manner, I suppose. It's a little more moves in fits and spurts. And the numbers don't, don't move in any kind of a, um, standard fashion.
And one other question while we're here on, uh, page six, the park dwelling funds. Can you explain what's going on there as far as what we're looking at as a proposed versus what was projected?
Yes, council member. So, uh, the $4 million that was projected for the current fiscal year was related to a specific development. Uh, I believe it's the one near the car dealerships down Commonwealth. And so depending on in any given year when these developments occur, there will be some years where there would be $4 million and then other years, uh, where the Parks Department, um, in working with community development, looks to see what other projects are, are known to come forward and they'll, they'll budget based off of that.
So, so real quick, so is that because that complex may not be fully occupied or built in that fiscal year?
Uh, council member, well, the projection is that it would be received in 18, 1819, uh, that the 4.4 million, 4.4 million dollars. And then the projection is next year, there's not another project of that size that's currently on the horizon. And so the expectation would be next year, just based on the normal course, uh, that there would only be 300 and some thousand dollars. And just even on these, as, as the world doesn't care about fiscal years necessarily. So if there were some kind of a slowdown on the development or some reason for those fees to not show up in fiscal year 1819, they wouldn't come in until, until 19, 1920. And for those monies to be spent, regardless of when they come in, they can't be spent without council, council approval. Thank you. So the proposed next steps, um, at this point, I think you have a pretty good idea of how fiscal year 1819 is looking. If I can just reflect on fiscal year 1617, the general fund lost $4 million. And the end of fiscal year 1718, the general fund was exactly even within a .01 of a percentage. And for 1819, the general fund will end up with $3 million or more of additional fund balance. And so, um, those are obviously due to the actions that have been taken by the council over the last 24 to 36 months. The city manager, the labor groups, um, and the economy holding up as well. So, uh, the proposal for the 1920 budget is a public hearing and adoption at the next council meeting on June 4th. Obviously continuous monitoring through fiscal year 1920. The same items, newly identified organizational efficiencies, that, that continues to move forward. Revised revenue expenditure projections will be brought back to council. An item that's not on their community developments going through, uh, through a fee study currently. So that would be another item that, that comes back to realign fees, uh, so that they more adequately equate the actual costs. And then really going forward into 1920, um, talking about some of these issues, um, with this being a status quo budget, with service levels being static and with no additional funding for any infrastructure. Staff would start scheduling meetings with the, um, Infrastructure and Natural Resources Committee to discuss assessment of city infrastructure, uh, which would be streets, parks, storm drains, sidewalks, buildings, et cetera. Uh, I purposely, uh, used the Muckenthaler. I saw there was a recent event. It's a striking piece of architecture as you drive to the Panda Express at Emmeridge Heights. And that's an asset that I, that I see and I recognize, not being a resident of the city, that it's a valuable asset and that there are costs associated with protecting these types of assets. And I would be happy to answer any questions on any of the attachments or any of the slides that have been presented before you.
So any, uh, questions from council before we open it up or do we wanna?
No, um, are we discussing fees, uh, as well, uh, that are?
Yes, council member.
We'll open it up to public comments. All right, so we'll open it up to public comments. So at this time, if you're wishing to, uh, address the council on this matter, please step up. And is anyone interested? All right, see you now, we'll bring you back. All right. Mr. Zara, since you are, were interested in the fees, we'll, we'll let you, if you have any questions, if not, we can.
I, I do have some questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mike, and for the presentation. Obviously, the, the big issue is we need more revenue and so I, I would like to see how we can explore those options moving forward. But, um, as we look at this particular budget, um, I was looking through the, uh, the fees that are proposed today, for, um, it's mostly Parks and Rec. And one of the, it's hard to read this, it's, it's sideways. See if I can.
And tell us what page you're referring to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get to those pages, but I'm trying to situate this big book in front of me here and the microphone. So, so one of the, the concerns I have is that, um, the, the market rate adjustments actually bumped up our rates to the point where it may, um, affect, um, our residents, considering that we have a large number of disadvantaged, um, areas in our city. So I want to be mindful of, uh, of our fee assessment, uh, on community, uh, centers, and our facilities. So one of the things I, I appreciate that there was the 10% uh, discount added for, for military veterans. Uh, I would like to, I'd like to suggest adding that, uh, expanding that to some of the other facilities as well, because I think it's right now just, uh, at Maple, uh, I believe the, the, um, museum and, um, I think maybe the plaza. But other community, uh, centers and buildings, it does not include those and it does, it's not included also in our main facility. So I'd like to see if we can expand that so it covers, um, simply all our facilities. And the other, uh, thing would be on, the page four, if you look at, of, of the attachment. Which one is this here? The attachment four, page four. So there are, and on the Independence Park, uh, fees for annual senior, uh, the individual for the annual is $200. And if you calculate that, this is for the, I believe for the gym usage. If you calculate that, I'm not sure how this, um, is competitive with, let's say, crunch or, uh, any of the other $10 month gyms. And I think that we should be a little bit more mindful to, um, to our seniors who are mostly fixed income. So I'd like to see this one be, uh, a little bit lowered, uh, so that we are competitive with the, uh, actual market rate. The other, uh, thing I was a little confused about is here for, on page five, which is on the electrical. Thank you. There's, on the electrical, uh, there are two different numbers when, when you have the fireworks show and festival and then the first night. One is the outlet is $50 and the other one is $60. Is, is there a reason for that?
Well, let's start with Independence Park and we'll go down the road. Um, Independence Park, the gym is not a fitness gym, it's the gymnasium. And I think the fees you're looking at were for, uh, annual racquetball and gym passes. So it's a little bit different. So if you divide that by monthly, but it's not for like, it's not like a crunch or anything like that. It's, uh, the gymnasium and the racquetball courts.
Right, but I mean, in, in general though, it is, it's a, it's a sports facility. And so if you compare, if one is choosing what type of sports they want to do. I, I still think for seniors, I think who are fixed income, I still think that's a little bit higher if you calculate it on a monthly basis. So I, I just wanted to be mindful of our fixed income seniors who, um, and so I, I'd like to see that one just slightly lowered. Uh, I don't know if there's going to be a major impact on our budget because of a, a, a smaller discount here.
Okay. Well, we could look at it.
Yeah, and just on, you know, on that note, on, on the planet fitness, you're right, it's like $10 a month. But they don't tell you the 150 annual fee and then the other 16 dollars for that. So, so it is, this is.
They do waive that occasionally, so.
We do do an extensive market study every year to look at different fees and how we, how we match up to other cities and how we match up to other private, um, facilities. We don't try to match up to private facilities, we try to match up to, um, other cities. So it, it is, you know, all our fees are in line. We are, uh, 63%, our department is different from others, 63% of our budget is revenue and not, uh, not funding. I will have Amanda come up, Amanda Arbista, come up and speak to you about some of her programs at the fees that you're wanting to look at, which would be the fireworks show, um, the fees for Maple Center. I can't speak to the fees for the community center and some of the other ones we don't, we aren't offering a veteran's discount there because that one is very market rate. What we have there are mostly weddings, uh, that sort of event. And, um, we are, our, our market study tells us that we're on the low side.
But there are also other rooms. I mean, there, you know, there's, you don't, it's not necessarily renting the whole thing.
We have mostly businesses, not nonprofits renting at the community center. It runs a little bit differently from other, other facilities. And that's why we didn't offer that kind of discount at the community center, but that doesn't mean we can't look at it. But let me bring Amanda up and she can talk to you about the other fees that you had questions on. We'll tag team, some of them are mine, some of them are hers.
Good evening, council members. Hi. I can answer your question about the fireworks show, Fourth of July versus, uh, New Year's Eve, the price difference on electrical. Is there two separate events? So Fourth of July is a lot smaller and we have about 10 vendors and first night, there's about 20 vendors and it's throughout all of downtown. So there's a lot more in, uh, first nights, also very late at night. So they do have more vendors actually using electricity versus Fourth of July. It's not too dark, it's summertime, so it doesn't get dark till pretty late.
And then, um, and as far as the, the, the veterans discount, is that something that could be applied to certain, um, rooms or within the, the main facility? And also at the other buildings that we have, we have, um, other facilities that we can rent up at Hillcrest Park and there's Chapman and.
Those are not mine, but my, mine are the ones you listed. The museum, the downtown plaza and the Maple Center are offering the veterans discount.
Right.
The other ones are Alice's.
And, and then we bring that back to the market study, like Chapman, we're actually lowering some fees at some of our facilities based on the demand. So we have facilities where we have a lot of residents or a lot of non-residents wanting to rent it. That mean, we try to come up to meet their demand and come up with a fee with that. And likewise with the facilities that aren't rented as much, we're looking at lowering fees. But we don't have, you're right, we don't have a veterans discount. The, some of the facilities are so low, an hourly rate, like the picnic areas are, it's like $11 an hour. So it's, you know, if we put a, a discount on it, it becomes, you know, costs us way more to provide the picnic area.
But what about the other neighborhood centers or the, the park buildings? So I've got Chapman Building, you've got the Red Cross Building, um, Orange Shore Building. I mean, those are, those, there's no discount there on, for veterans and those potentially could be used.
Yes, they, they can potentially be used and we have no problem looking at that to decide if we need to, if we can do, afford to put a, a veterans discount. Some of those facilities, as I said, are going down. It's, yeah, some of them are not, depends on demand, but, um, Chapman Building is, you know, it's going $5 more to $40 an hour. It is a whole building, we do have to open it. It does cost us $22 to send one out each hour, so to open it and to close it and to clean it. So our fees are very nominal, but we can certainly look at a veterans discount.
Yeah, I'd, I'd appreciate that. And also, um, what I would, the way I would see it is that group one and two, you see, I'm, I'm concerned about the residents. And so group one and two, it could be either maintained and then offset by increasing that same amount on the group five of, of four, or the other ones where it's maybe corporate or for profit or, or outside of.
And that's how the fees are designed for the other groups to subsidize the residents.
Right. But I think we can, what I'm saying is that we can actually do that now, still maintaining the older rates or even lower some of the ones on, uh, group one and two, uh, while increasing more on the other ones. And in that way, it adjusts the entire thing. And then still may be able to lower, uh, even more or keep the ones that we already have.
Yeah, well, we can do another market rate study to see if that would be feasible for us to implement, to do.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, what we could do if, if directed is to look at what that impact would be. So if it's a senior rate that is a 10% discount, um, or some reduced rate at another center, we could look at what that does to that center price, what it does to the revenue coming in and then have that information on June 4th. And then it truly comes down to a policy decision of the city council. And what it comes down to is, as you heard Alice say, is Parks and Rec is about 63% revenue supported. So every revenue reduction then theoretically increases the general fund subsidy of the services. And so, uh, we would have to look, and I know that we could, if we reduce a couple hundred dollars, we could find a couple hundred dollars elsewhere to, um, cut to make up for that. If it's a, a certain amount higher than that, then that's when we have to look a little bit deeper. bit deeper at the budget. But we can bring that information back at the June 4th. That's really what this opportunity is for during the budget workshop, is to hear these items from you and then bring them back at the June 4th to, you know, get some final direction, whatever the call of the council is.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I'd like to make sure that our residents have, are, even if there is a small subsidy, but we, I don't think there will be if we are making it up with increases on the for-profit businesses. We can still maintain that. I want to jump to Maple Community Center just real quick.
Can I just respectfully make a suggestion that perhaps, this sounds very detailed and it seems to me that it might benefit you and Parks and Rec to meet separately from them, see if you can come to some agreement regardless, then bring policy direction ideas to us June 4th, rather than go through every fee that you want to talk about tonight. I mean, obviously you have a right to do that, but I mean, I look at the sports field users' policy that's being created. I've spent hours of my own time meeting with the Parks and Rec director, with Parks and Rec commissioners, going line by line through that policy to make sure that I'm ready to make policy, you know, direction ideas.
Yeah, and with respect, we have had these discussions before and there was actually an item on Maple Community Center specifically, and it came to council, there was direction, it went back to the commissions, we never saw it again, and then it went to the commission and it kind of disappeared there. The idea was that there was going to be some reductions, but there is a discrepancy here in these numbers between the Maple Community Center's numbers, for example, which is the one, the item that was brought to us, and what is proposed, what was at the commission level. So this is why I'm, you know, and I did sit down with Hugo and with Ken, we did discuss some of these, and I went over with Ken some of these items. So my concern, the reason I'm bringing up the details, that I'm seeing some discrepancy in the numbers. So even when we're giving direction, and I believe we did give direction to lower some of the community fees on residents, but I'm still not seeing that.
When was the direction given?
I think it was before you came on, council member.
Was this December or something?
Yeah.
You know, my take on it is this, a lot of these facilities are oversubscribed. That means that the community is clamoring to use them, and one of the reasons they are clamoring to use them is because the fees are so modest. When you talk about giving a blanket reduction to seniors, some of the wealthiest people in this town are seniors. And so why would you have them pay less for use of a public facility than somebody else? Now, I think your concern could be addressed where a person couldn't afford it and maybe there would be an application process. But I think what we have to do is balance the continued viability of being able to provide community services that are supported presently by 63%, 63% of their support comes from the fees. And this didn't, you know, just drop out of the ether. Parks and Recreation Commission has done it, there has been a market study, and Fullerton has, generally speaking, historically leased their facilities at less than the adjacent communities. So unless we're getting a lot of complaints from the community, and so far, I have not heard one complaint.
So councilwoman, I'm not bringing this out of just because I want to do this. It is based on complaints that I've received from my neighbors, from people in my neighborhood that can't afford using some of these facilities. I can cite a group of Aztec dancers, indigenous groups, who were driven out of this because the fees went up, they doubled on them and they couldn't maintain their own heritage and cultural activities on a weekly basis anymore, and that was specifically for the Maple. My neighbor, my next door neighbor, she wanted to have a Bible study in Maple and it was just too pricey for her. Because remember, there's a minimum of two hours, sometimes there's a minimum of three hours.
Well, perhaps we can address, like in some of the-
I think Bible studies should be conducted in a local church.
Well, I mean, it could be a book club, it could be anything.
Well, yeah, what I was going to suggest, maybe, maybe we can look at some of the few adjustments you're requesting, to look at those more closely in the neighborhoods where the law socioeconomic is less than other neighborhoods. Because I think Ms. Florrie is correct, we are an aging city and some of our, we have a large population of seniors who are wealthier than other parts of the city, so.
I mean, I would be very happy to entertain a waiver or an application for that, that is something we can do. I'm not arguing this.
I think that's a better idea.
Yeah. But the reason I originally brought Maple, because Maple is situated in an area that is very disadvantaged and economically disadvantaged, so is Gilbert Community Center and also Chapman to a certain degree. So that's why I brought these up specifically. Now, I was reviewing the, this overall and looking at it and the senior gym membership or racquetball membership, that kind of struck my attention. But my main concern is that the neighborhood centers that are in, that are meant for the neighborhoods are really outpricing those neighborhoods, especially in the south side of Fullerton.
So maybe we can focus on those instead of like a blank discount, maybe let's focus on some of those communities where it is more of a hardship and really, because I agree with you, I have had some complaints from the South of Commonwealth where some of the fees are a little too high for them. And I've had a couple of groups, so not a lot of them, but I think we do need to look maybe at an application process.
Some sort of a fee waiver program or a reduction, a discount program.
If you're at a certain group, that certain-
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, there was an item on February 5th that addressed the Maple fees based on communication from, I believe, it was a December council meeting. And so the fees that are represented here, the original fees, and Amanda, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe were $80, these are showing $70. I don't have the minutes from that meeting if it was reduced even further, but that is something we can bring back, is some type of waiver or other type of incentive. Again, we want to make sure that the centers are being utilized and that there's a maintenance ability to that, but also that they're not overly, sometimes you can kill a center by too much utilization. But Amanda, was the $80 fee what used to be there and then we reduced it to 70?
Yes, we did.
Okay. And so that 70 fee would continue in this one?
Yes, it's the Monday through Friday rate, it's $70 for group two residents and the Saturday through Sunday is $80. And that, we did do a market study of all local cities around us and we are very low compared to what people charge around us.
Okay, I think the highest in that staff report said like $110 or something.
It went all the way up to 200, so it goes, the lowest, the next one was about 115 to 120 was the next hourly rates compared to ours.
This manager, why didn't this item come back to us before studying this?
I think, didn't it come back in February?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe it came to the February, so it was originally requested in December, we brought something back in February, which reduced-
To the commission?
Well, the normal rates as an annual process go through the commission. They haven't raised what the council changed in February for the Maple Community Center, for that $70 fee that was reduced from 80. So that hasn't been changed. But again, what we can do with the, we can research other cities and look if there is a hardship waiver or some other type of fee structure. And again, the other thing is, and I don't know our computer programming and all that stuff and how we track utilization and who's paying what and where they're from, but most certainly I know, talking from Hugo, that we're looking to do a better job of all that so we can have the data to determine, you know, where are these folks coming from? Are they in the immediate neighborhood, are they from, you know, eight blocks away or a mile away, but still within Fullerton, so.
Right. On the Maple, and I'll sit with you again and I'll go over some of the details, I don't want to take up so much time here. But one point on the Maple, what I'd like to see is maybe the Fullerton-based individuals on group two, that moved up to group one. So that way it allows for the lower rate for individuals and residents moving up to that group one rate.
Group one is for like nonprofits, so that is lower, but the group two, so you want the group two to become the group run rate for the, so put nonprofits and individuals on the same group?
Correct.
Just so I understand?
Yes.
Well, I think what I, if I understand, individuals, so if a neighbor from the neighborhood comes in, they would be part one, because part, or group two also includes businesses, so.
Correct, so you remove the Fullerton-based individuals, just the individuals, you remove them and you add them to group one, and then it becomes Fullerton, group two is only Fullerton-based commercial businesses and religious groups. And that could, that would lower it, put them on the lower tier, and that could solve a little bit of that problem.
Yeah, because technically if it's an individual and they're having a birthday party, that's a nonprofit event and that fits within if we have not Fullerton-based nonprofit individual, school district, civic, so that language would work, so.
Okay. All right, and you know, if our council allows me, I'd love to sit down in detail and go over some of this in further detail, if that's okay with the council, to sit with, further with Parks and Rec and director to go in in detail, so I don't have to bore you with this.
And just on that note, I, so, I mean, again, I was, had the same concern with Maple and I, maybe I missed it too in February, but I don't recall at least, I don't recall being notified that the rate was dropped to 70. So I don't know if it was maybe I didn't read or wasn't paying attention, but we-
We weren't notified, it was Parks, the commission was notified, so I actually-
Okay, so we, okay. So, I mean, that's just a breakdown, but I think if we request something, maybe we can do a better job of communicating to us your requests was put in place. Because I, that is, it was a concern of mine too, from, again, from a few residents, and I missed that.
That's definitely something we can work on.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I will just say my thanks again to you, Michael, and to all the department heads who did great work on this. You talked about a new policy that is going to discuss excess revenue or new revenue, and so I want to know if staff is planning on bringing that item, that new policy, back at the same time we're approving the new budget.
Council member, I'll speak and then I'll let Ken clarify. The suggestion I would make would be wait until you have a better sense of what the dollar amount is. I'm not sure that it would be developed appropriately between now and June 4th, just considering the level of work effort that's going to go into getting the budget still put together between now and the 4th. You certainly could. My suggestion would be maybe two weeks after that, as we solidify that number, it could end up being $4 million, but you certainly could bring it back, so I'll-
But the new council policy won't be specific to only this year, it will be on a going forward, you know, on a going forward policy. So, Ken? When are you planning on bringing the policy back for what to do with excess reserves?
Who can you get that done for Mike?
The 4th, it sounds like the 4th is the right answer, I knew I was giving the wrong answer.
That's a great answer, I like that answer a lot, much better than the one you gave, sorry.
That's what I'd like to do, so Mike's mine until he leaves.
Okay, very good. See, we're going to get every last bit of-
I knew it was the wrong answer, it was coming out.
That's what you get for leaving us. Very good. And what I appreciate, the harsh reality, you know, that you presented, and I think it's good to point out, you know, status quo and what that really means and what it would actually take in terms of money to improve our situation. And I think this community has some hard decisions to make over the next, over the next year, two years, to figure out what kind of city we want to be and to make some hard decisions about, you know, putting action to the kind of community that we want to be. So I really look forward to working with all the employees and our staff, our community and our natural resources committee on finding ways to solve the big budget problems that we have.
Yeah, I just had a comment to add to the notion of what is competitive and what is market level. Many of the sites, locations, facilities that the city controls are in effect monopolies. In this location in the city, there may not be other venues like some of these venues. I think back to one of the times when I was mayor, and I've always been a proponent, a supporter of the ballet folklorico, the Monte Albano Ballet Folklorico, and they were looking to do a fundraiser at the museum plaza. They were a little bit flexible as to the time and the date, but they were looking to receive a waiver that would make it economically possible. Now, my argument would be that some nonprofits like that, Faye Perez who ran it, lived here in Fullerton, a lot of the kids were Fullerton kids as well. If the facility is not being used, if it's sitting idle and if it's the type where there's not a lot of damage to be had with that stage in the museum plaza, and if there is some cultural benefit, as I believe there is in the performances that are provided from them, that we can't just look at that as a straight competing with corporate events or something like that. So, and I sought some form of waiver at that time, just to bring it down to the realm of possibility, and the cost was extremely prohibitive at that time. I can't think of most groups like that that would even be able to touch it. So what that does is it bars groups like that from being able to utilize these public spaces. While I'm not looking for wholesale subsidies of all this, I think the city has to look at these locations as more than just a source of revenue. I really think that we want to get adequate utilization of all these sites. And one of the things, we burden certain of these activities with a lot of legal requirements and a lot of city salaries and additional other components that do take these locations out of the realm of possibility. So that's, I would like to see us be competitive in the truest sense by looking at these different categories and some exceptions and not just saying, we have a one-price policy, this is it for everybody. And so in that respect, yes, I do think there's probably a better way of looking at this.
Yeah, and on that note, could we do something where we, because I know in the sports users' field, the soccer, we have a policy that if you're, 80% of the participants are in Fullerton, live in Fullerton, there's a certain discount for them. So just on Mr. Whitaker's idea, could we look at if there is a cultural event and the red, the participants are mostly from Fullerton, maybe allow three, four waivers a year or maybe select four or five days a year where if you're a nonprofit, cultural, you know, some parameters, you could use one of these dates for an event. So can we bring something back to look at that, to see how would that impact? And again, it's not to subsidize everything across the board, but pick, maybe pick four days out of the year, these are the days, apply, kind of like we do with the fireworks stand, we go through a raffle and put some of those parameters that we do with the sports user field, do you have your 501(c)(3), do you have insurance, are the residents, are the participants mostly from Fullerton? So can we bring something back?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we can do that because we've looked at a public benefit use for some of the items at the library. So when a group goes in and, for example, recently enough, did both the candidate forum, but then also they've done some public forums on different issues, we've looked at a public benefit kind of fee reduction for that event. So we're not charging them for every microphone and all that stuff. So we're more than happy to bring something like that back to.
Yeah, let's bring something back, please.
Any other? No, we're good, all right. So is that enough direction?
I move to receive and file.
All right. All in the favor?
Aye.
All right, all opposed? All right, thank you very much, and we are moving to our-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Real quick, before we move to the next item, just because we have mentioned it, but I do want to thank Michael Kelly- but I do want to thank Michael Kelly for his service to us on the budget. Just for public knowledge, Mike is leaving us. I knew when I hired him, and I hired a very, very, very good person, that I was hoping to hold on to him for a while, but that the lure of other councils and other cities would come soon, he is going to become the city manager for the city of Bill Gardens, and so, but he will return to us on June fourth to lay this baby to rest and tuck it in nicely for the next fiscal year, but he's been great for this budget, I believe that this budget and our last budget have been truly balanced, we've looked at many parts of the budget that haven't been looked at before, I call it, you know, the truth in budgeting, to make sure that we're actually being forthright and effective with taxpayer funds, and he's just done a great job, so I do appreciate it. I hate him for leaving me, but I'll soon forgive him when he starts calling me, asking me about how to deal with councils, so, thank you very much, Mike.
Yeah, and thank you, Michael, thanks for, for your time here.
Mr. Domer, you beat me to the punch, because Michael, he spent an hour and a half with me the other day, and I have a much finer understanding of the budget at this time, but we went through it page by page, and it was, it was an education and much needed on my part, so thank you, and for all of your work here.
All right, so, moving on to item sixteen, is this the chief?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, tonight before you, we have three requests from the police department. We're asking for you to approve some amendments to our tow contracts, we currently have two tow truck vendors for the city of Fullerton Police Department that handle our rotational toes, and the last time we did any type of RFP process was in 2014, they had five-year contracts, those contracts expire in about ten days. So we're looking to extend both vendors, both Hadley Tow and Anaheim Fullerton Tow, on a month-to-month basis while we conduct an RFP. And so, before you, is a request to approve the contracts, which are month-to-month, starting on the thirty-first, then to adopt a resolution that changes our, our tow guidelines that we've have vetted through the city, city attorney's office, and then direct us to issue the RFP, which we have ready to go.
I have a question for you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
There have been so many problems with Hadley, is there a reason that we have to continue them month-to-month going forward during this?
There isn't a reason that we have to, no, we're just trying to be as fair as possible through the process.
Okay, I appreciate the answer, thanks.
I have a question, in both of the contracts that were let five years ago, there was a, a two-year option that could be exercised, have either one of the current tow operators exercised that op, that option?
The, that option was up to us, and we did not choose to exercise it, we're choosing to go this route instead.
Okay, so did they apply for the option?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Oh, okay, I mean, in most contracts that provide an option, you have to exercise that option within thirty days of expiration of the contract, or something to that effect.
Yeah, based on my recollection of the contracts as they were, we were the, the consumer, or the customer, and we had the option to exercise the two-year extension.
Oh, so it wasn't the other way around?
And we're choosing not to do that, we're choosing to go this.
Those contracts were, gave the city the right to extend it two years, the city chose not to, and we're coming back with a month-to-month and allowing the, if these vendors want to apply, they can apply through the process.
All right, that was my first question, because it was not described in the agenda letter, thank you.
Well, just on that note, when I was speaking to the city manager, from what I understood, and he's not here right now, it wasn't clear as to who was supposed to initiate the extension of the option, in some ca, I think I understood that it was either the city or the, the contractors, so, so that was, so that's now news to me, because I think I spoke with you, and I don't, maybe I, you said it, and I missed it, but I don't recall being said, it is up to us, and they, they, the contractors don't have an option, so if I missed it, but I don't recall that, so that's good to know. And, and then, and have you, I guess, since our agenda came, agenda came out, have you had any calls from the contractors regarding their disapproval or?
I have not, but let me just check with the traffic staff that manages that contract, any calls from either vendor? No.
All right.
No.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up to my question, so, I just want to be clear, do you need to keep both of these on, on month-to-month while you do this RFP?
Need to? No, ma'am, however, there, there was a process that occurred in 2014.
No, I was part of it, I remember.
That ended up being, there was extensions given by another city department that ended up making the process muddy, if you will, so we, in looking at the entire process, decided it would be best to be as fair as possible, and that's why we came with this recommendation. But there is no need, no.
Okay. Any other questions before we open it up to?
Does the city attorney have the old contract in front of him?
No.
Oh, you do not, okay, and the attachment, the redlined attachment is not a copy of the old contract, is that right? Because I'm wondering what's being, it's, uh, police tow policy guidelines and requirements, that was not the original contract.
No, that's what'll be a part of the RFP process.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so then at this time, we'll open it up for any comments from the, the audience, is anyone wishing to come up and comment or speak on this? All right. See, now we'll, we'll bring you back here. Chief, so, so, just a question, how long will it take to complete in the RFP, what, what's the timeline for that?
Well, it's really up to our option, thirty, sixty, ninety days, we think thirty days would probably be fair.
So thirty days, it'll take us thirty days to, so I'm sorry, how long will it take us to send it out, get it all completed and come back with the, with the?
Yeah, thirty days to send it out and get responsive bidders, or responsive proposals. There is a process that we go through at the police department of inspecting these individual vendors, that could take us up to ninety or a hundred and twenty days.
Okay, all right, so we're, we're looking at maybe four months?
Very comprehensive inspections that go on to make sure that the tow providers can provide what we're looking for in the RFP.
I support the recommendation, and I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation and the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, any other comments?
Yeah, I just, I just want to say, I'll be voting against this, because I don't think we should give Hadley a month-to-month extension. I have seen the notebook of complaints against Hadley, and, I mean, we're putting people who have been in collisions, who are in a vulnerable state in the hands of these, you know, tow operators, and we struggled in 2014 with who to award this to in the first place, and we knew that it was all a risk, and it hasn't proven to be beneficial for us to have Hadley as a contractor, so if it's going to take four to potentially six months to get new recommendations back to the city council, I think that's too long to let a company that we know has been deficient in so many ways continue to operate, so I'm a no vote.
Thank you, any other comments?
Well, it is really the first that I've heard of the deficiencies, and the only reason why I would probably go the other direction from Councilmember Fitzgerald is back in 2011, I believe, when we first did the process, there was an interest on the council to ensure that we had two tow operators at a minimum for the city, and so if we were to bump Hadley out at this point, then we're back to just the one tow operator that we have, and there were a number of reasons for that at the time, it was different councils, certainly, but, yeah, I remember the purpose, and I haven't heard some of these problems other than some facility-related issues. I know Hadley did locate off Orange Thorpe there to stay in the city, because that was one of the requirements back when, that, that they wanted someone ideally to be in the city, and our other tow operator is not in the city, I mean, they're across the line over in Anaheim, but I do see an advantage in maintaining more than one approved tow company, and so I, I think, at least structurally, that's still a good idea. Now, this is a month-to-month, which I think is a little bit extreme, because it'll take some time to get this together, I think, as far as the entire process, so I'd actually be in favor of extending it at least a year, and that's why, the only reason I see excess urgency here is in maybe an intent to just bump and get back to just one, the one tow company, which, for a number of reasons, I think is not as healthy as us having at least two for the city.
So is that a?
Oh, I'm.
I'm not sure how to vote on this.
I certainly don't want to approve strictly a month-to-month, I could make a motion for a year extension, and in fact, I'll do that if I have a second.
All right, I'll, yeah, on my part, so I did receive some concerns about Hadley, a few of them, but when I inquire, it seemed, from what I was told, we hadn't been doing a well enough job of managing our contracts, and when I first looked into this, we were almost certain that the contract expired at the beginning of May, and then after further investigation or conversations, no, it expires at the end of May, so there's been some discrepancies there, and, and so, and again, I think it would be good to have two right now, so on that note, I would second your motion, so it would be a substitute motion, and.
Chief, do you, I'm, I think the mayor just said that the police department hasn't done a good job of watching over this contract, is that true?
I think we could have done a better job.
Okay.
Of monitoring the contract a little closer, and having raised some of these issues that have come up in the Hadley realm a little sooner. I, I was not here during that process, what I attributed it to is, when that last RFP was done, the entire RFP was taken out of the hands of the police department and placed it at other department. When we, we went about trying to find cancellation dates, we were given different information from the vendor, not from our staff, because the staff that did that doesn't work here anymore, so we were unable to gather our own facts from our own people, so in a way, yes, we could have done better, but certainly it wasn't for a lack of enforcement or documentation, because we do have that.
No, I, and I've seen the documentation.
And we will continue to do that.
So, moving forward then, is your department going to be in charge of this contract?
As it's set out here now in this, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, if I could add a little bit to that, so, we hear the discussion here, and one of the issues about going month-to-month is we want to make sure that we do have two vendors, we do believe that's important, so that's why we proposed a month-to-month, in order to get an RFP completed on the street, rated, and knowing the difficulties that five years ago were there, we want to have a third-party review, so that there's no concerns that maybe staff, you know, didn't like this person and therefore rated this person lower, or something like that, so we want to have that as a third-party review, so the information we're giving back to council is truly, you know, who's going to be the best vendor for that. If the discussion is go to a year, what I would suggest is that, you know, that's the maximum, the cutoff would be whenever it comes back to council to be awarded for a new contract, because, you know, yeah, is a month-to-month, is that going to take us four months, is it going to be five, we want to do a thorough job, and so, again, one of the, that's why the recommendation is like that, but I would suggest a, a year max, but have that kind of cutoff when it's brought back to council and awarded for a new agreement, because as the chief was saying, I would like to look at these agreements and kind of make them a little bit better, we've also looked at the tow policy and guidelines, and cleaned that up a little bit, and took some out of it, because we have, we had a lot of redundancy, because section 3.74 of our municipal code is all about the tow policy and guidelines, so, there was some cleanup that we've done, and I believe that going forward with this RFP, it'll be a much better process with better monitoring for whoever the next two vendors are going to be over the next five years, and whatever the extension is.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, I'm seeing here that we, we need to do obviously a better job at drafting our contracts with more accountability in them, and also monitoring them, so that we are engaging our vendors and making sure that they're doing their due diligence and, and, and doing their job efficiently and, and according to the contracts. I do think, though, with this particular case, there, there are a lot of, you know, issues that I think Hadley has tried to also address, whether, you know, and I don't know, I did not see the citations specifically, but, but I think a, this would be a good probation period in which we can monitor and see how he does, and how they do as far as operating, but I do agree that we do need two, because otherwise, if the other one falters or something, we'll, we'll be left without, so, so I'll be in favor of, and however, either way, whether it's month-to-month, I'm, it's, or, or for up to a year, I'll be okay with either of those, but, but it'll be a good period for us to test our, our new ability, or new test, new, new standards of, of monitoring.
Yes, sir.
There are, there are two reasons why I don't support the one-year cap, the first reason is, is that it may be that the RFP process takes longer than a year, and then we'll be back here in twelve months renewing the, the, the contract. The second reason is, is that both of the current operators will no doubt be responding to the RFP as well, and since they have a five-year history with the city, in ordinary circumstances, you would think that they would have a leg up, so the more quickly we can go through the RFP process, the more we can solidify the next contract. The third reason why I'm going to support this is because you're going to have an outside agency reviewing the responses to the RFP, and I do recall five years ago.
That was done.
When that was an issue, because the prospective operators were a little bit suspicious about city staff and our police department reviewing the responses, so I think that's a, a really good way to do it, so, for those reasons, I am not going to support the one-year proposal, but will support the recommendation for month-to-month.
Okay, so, right, did you, did you want to modify or stay with him?
Stay with it.
All right, so there's been a motion and then a substitute, so we'll do the substitute first.
May I just clarify, Mr. Whitaker, is, is your sub-motion a, a month-to-month up to a year, or is it a full year?
It would be a full year.
A full year. Would you be able, would you amend it to a month-to-month up to a year?
Well, then, that's effectively a month-to-month, basically, I mean, that would render, you know, a distinction without a difference, really, is what we'd be looking at. The operator right now is, is, I understand, is investing more in the property to make sure that it meets all requirements that, that the department would like it to meet, and so it's, I mean, any time that you force someone through a lot of capital investment, an additional capital investment, then to have just a month-to-month where the plug can be pulled pretty rapidly, I'm not sure that's a really good business practice, no matter who it is that you're dealing with, but I mean, we could do something like we did with the Hump Branch, where we rented it out for a maximum eighteen months, and that was years ago, and we're still on that, it converted to a month-to-month, and so this council sometimes sets limits and then ignores those limits as well. I, I just hate to lose the notion that was put in place was the idea that we wanted at least two tow companies, and we seem to be really ready to bump one out and, and render us back to one. That would be my concern, my concern is that, number one.
Only one of us said that, that's me, I'd, I would like to not use Hadley anymore for this month-to-month, but I don't have the votes for that, so I think we need to vote on your motion, a year or month-to-month?
And, and my motion is that you have someone who's actively looking to maintain and is doing reinvestment, and it's just, it's not, it's not a good business practice to do that.
And they've been trying to do that since 2014, that was their promise to us when we gave them the contract to begin with.
Well, we're hearing of deficiencies, and we've also, we haven't acted to curtail such deficiencies as well, so, and as in any contract, there may be shortcomings on both sides, and I heard the chief say, and I think I appreciate your candor on that, is you've had turnover, you've had a number of different things, I'm not blaming anyone, but it is what it is at this point, and, and I think that we could, we could expect improved performance going forward, any new tow company that we'll choose in this process, whenever we do get to the RFP, it's going to be the same thing. it's going to be the same thing. There's no real guaranteed performance. We just have to monitor that.
Yeah. And thank you for explaining the situation, because I wasn't aware that would people have moved. I just, when I got the information, I think from you and the manager, it was just, we're not, it wasn't all there, and so, I understand why not. So, thank you. All right, so, there's been a substitute motion, so, and a second. So, all in favor of the substitute motion? If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
No.
All right, so, then, the substitute motion, Mr. Zar, did you say aye on that one?
Yes.
It went past. So, the substitute motion passes three to two?
Mm-hmm.
And so, all right, so, then, we'll move on that.
So, just to clarify, the substitute motion was to extend for a year, so what we would be looking at is launching an RFP prior to that year so that we would have a selection process and new vendors prior to the expiration of a year.
Yes.
You have the tow policy? Tow guidelines?
Okay, and?
Adoption of the resolution?
Yeah, so, that was on the one. We do have the adoption of the resolution, which is a revision and update of the tow policy and guidelines. So, if there's any questions to the chief or if?
Any questions on the?
Nope.
All right.
Thanks, Chief.
Is that part of the motion? I want to make sure for the city clerk.
Yes, yes. We'd be happy to incorporate it. I would second.
Yes, okay. All right. And then, we would incorporate the third one to write, "Direct staff to issue a request or proposal."
Yes.
You're right on number one.
Yes. Right, right.
All right, thank you. And that brings us to the consent items. Number three was the first one. All right, Councilmember Zar, I believe you pulled this one?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to send a letter of support for AB 143 Assemblywoman Querc Silva, who authored the bill. And it's to address homelessness and adding Orange County to the, for us, the ability to declare homelessness crisis. I think this will help us in our current situation with what we're trying to accomplish. So, this would be a good gesture on our part to send a letter of support for this.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, what this proposed piece of legislation does is, currently within the government code, it does allow the declaration of a shelter crisis. What this does is it adds Orange County to the list of probably about seven or eight counties that, within that code, have the ability to kind of waive the SEQA requirement for building a shelter or navigational center for that purpose. So, it expedites the ability to get that done, and, yes, it would be a very good thing. I don't believe it's an urgency, so it would not take effect until January 1st, so it would not help the two navigational centers that are going into the North Spa, but it would help out Orange County in general, and it is supported by our legislative platform.
So, if it's supported by our legislative platform, we don't need a vote on it, right? The mayor can just send that letter?
He could just send the letter, but if it is a direction, that's always good to have too, because it does.
Okay. I'd like to move to send a letter of support.
All right. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose? All right.
Send, receive, and file.
I was going to say, is there a motion to receive and file this item?
Yeah, move to receive and file.
All right. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Number seven? Five.
Oh, five. Did we get five?
Bruce wanted to register, no vote, I think.
Oh, yeah, Bruce.
I'd move the item.
Yes, five. I had earlier placed a no vote. This is the second consideration, so I'd like to reflect a no vote on this. I don't really need to discuss it, I don't think.
All right.
Move the item.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And seven?
Well, no, actually.
So, four, one on that one.
I think yes to, it's no, I got it.
Yeah. Number seven?
Number seven.
Once upon a time, we had a city treasurer, the acting city treasurer was, we had a consulting firm that advised as to how to invest our city portfolio. Do we still have that?
Yes, we do. It's public trust advisors, and we have, they are present at the quarterly investment advisory committee meeting, so.
We're on the public.
Yeah.
Okay, you are. All right. Because I was respectfully going to ask what your expertise was to be appointed the interim city treasurer pending a new director of administrative services.
Well, I held it once before, and essentially, we do rely on the public trust advisors, so it's, Mike, you may be able to explain it better, but we do need for the checks and balances, the signature is a independent person to review some of the transactions.
Thanks, Ken. Councilmember, so, the dated activities are generally handled by the revenue manager. What Ken would really be doing is overseeing all of the treasury operations, so it's on a higher-level basis and really just verifying if the revenue manager's looking at cash flows and saying, hey, there's, we're expecting an eight-million-dollar payment from the county for property tax. We want to get that invested. She'll just contact Ken and say, hey, this is what looks like makes sense based on cash flow, based on yields, and, you know, Ken will look at it and generally will agree with her because she's been doing the job for a few years and understands what's happening.
When such directions are given, does it require the blessing of two people?
Well, not, not, oh, yes, for the transfer of funds, if you're going to move funds, let's say, out of the state local agency investment fund, and you're going to move it to the investment fund, yes.
Uh-huh. And so, once Ken is appointed the interim city treasurer, who is the second signatory on that?
It'd be the revenue manager.
Okay.
And also, I think, a third backup is the fiscal services manager as well.
So, that would be Ramona Castaneda?
Yes.
Okay.
And I do sit on the investment advisory committee as a member, so I have been active in all those items there, so.
All right. I move the recommendation to adopt the resolution number 2019 next in order.
All in favor?
I just want to comment. I have every faith in Mr. Domer on this, but the optics are still problematic. And so, if there was any other alternative, I thought that that might be desirable, and if the vacancy is expected to be very short, then that would be a good thing. And it's more based on public perception than any reality. I don't really have a problem with the reality of it, but that's where I'm at with it.
Okay. All in favor? Aye? Oppose?
No.
All right. Passes four to one. And what was the other item?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
One of the things that staff is just great about is when we have such curb gutter and sidewalk reconstruction is a map of the areas that are going to be worked on. And I think that it would behoove us to put a map of where the reconstruction areas are going to be so that our citizens can prepare for it, number one, and also know if they're next in line for such improvements. So, I was a bit surprised that we didn't have such a map here.
And we do have a map, so we can make sure we include it in the next, any future council reports, but also post it on the website.
All right. And just for the heck of it, would you email the council with a copy of the map?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Just to clarify, Maing, will that be on the CIP map that's on the Public Works?
Yes.
That you can pinpoint and see what's going on? Okay, thank you.
So, it'll be on the June 4th agenda, then?
Well, no.
Should be on here.
Well, so, this is a current-year award.
Yes.
Of a project. What's in the budget is for the next fiscal year, because annually, we have a curb and gutter and sidewalk project. So, this has gone through, INRAC has reviewed it probably months ago, based on the criteria, which is?
Okay, well, just send us a map, then. That's all we need to do. And I'll move the recommendation.
Second. Any comments? All in favor? Oppose? All right, passes five, all. Was there any other items?
Nope.
All right. With that, we've come to the end of the night, so I'm stuck. I adjourned the meeting. Thank you, and we'll see you in June. Thank you so much.
He was just having so much.